Okay.
That's for Bori, everyone.
Yeah, I'd like to add a resolution about the time it comes to thank Russell, being what the organization was successful.
Okay, well, we'll put that after the. We do that after the last one. Okay, anything else with that? So my kind of motion to approve each other with.
I understand. Can we just put that on the consent agenda?
Well, I'll just read it so that you can be putting in the time.
Okay, we can't do that. All right.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the agenda as a move? Second by bar is there's.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say that we were actually muted and we do have somebody that did want to make a public comment.
Okay. Okay, so is there discussion on the improvement channel here now all this? So thank you. We will now go back to the public comment period.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, everybody. So you didn't miss anything while we were muted, the council. You just saw the, you just heard the. The motion that they made that they were briefly discussing, but George Wyatt wished to make any comments.
Okay, okay, George. Good evening.
Okay, yeah. Shall I go ahead?
Yes. Remember to say your name, remember to say your name and your street for the record.
Sure, sure. So George Wyatt on Fallstone Avenue. And and this won't be very long, but there this police to an agenda item late in the meeting. I can't get on. Stay on that long, so I wanted to just make a comment at this point, if that's okay.
Of course.
It relates to the. Uh LED lights and the. The test lights and the question of the brightness of the lights that the town will choose.
Um.
Uh as as a member of the Public Service Public Safety Committee. Um I walked around, looked at the four different locations where there were tests. Uh test LEDs in place, and this is just my my reaction to that. It's not on behalf of the committee. But I guess I would just thought I would pass it on as kind of one person's reaction. It's not an issue. I've spent a lot of time thinking about just kind of as personally in town, looking at the lights. So basically, uh the the I thought that first of all, the the intersection lighting. At Dorset and Surrey, which I think is the less intense, seemed about right to me. Uh the one at Warwick seemed. Awfully bright. You know, Walmart or something. Uh and then the other one, I know there's been concern about sidewalks needing to be better lit. Um so I looked, I spent some time looking and walking around the location on Surrey. In the block between Essex and Dorset. And my my reaction to that was that the the lighting in the street was about right. Um I don't know how it compares to what we have now, but it seemed about right to me. The sidewalk was still really dark, but that's because the light. Is on a pole that sticks out over the street. So the light is really, you know, the LED light was really just illuminating the street. And it didn't seem to me that cranking that illumination up to a higher level would. Um make a lot of difference in terms of the sidewalk. And I also don't think that, I mean, maybe some tree trimming would help, but. The tree was right between the light and the sidewalk, and I think that's gonna happen in some locations, so. Uh whatever has to be done for the sidewalks might be done with some trimming or maybe some other options, but I did. I guess basically bottom line was I came came away from looking at those four locations and. In in each case, I thought that the um less intense illumination was. Uh was fine and what I was really comfortable with and that choosing a a more intense illumination. Uh to me would not solve the problem of the sidewalks. That that probably needs a different solution at some point. So that's the extent of my thoughts.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your comments, and I'm sure the council will give them serious consideration.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to consideration of the consent agenda. Second bar in service second, is there a discussion hearing now all this in favor? All this, thank you. Uh we will now go to permit hearings and building reports. The first item is public hearing motion to consider approval. Of a three month extension request submitted by Miriam Rosenthal and Michael Phillips. For the ongoing construction project in fifty five twenty two place and street.
Yeah, uh so uh three months ago, the applicants had applied for a. An extension at that time. They had said that they expected the work to only take three months, but. They at that time had requested six months. Um but given that we expected the work to only take three months, we gave them a three month uh extension. Um so. The applicant submitted another extension request that I included for you. Um I will note that they requested that the council waive the extension fee. Um which I I will leave to the council to decide, but the staff recommendation was to. Approve the three month extension to the permit.
And uh do the. Uh to the.
I don't believe that they are attending tonight.
And do you want to elaborate on? On fee waiving, or maybe it's. Can say something.
Oh, because I don't. Yeah, so the only the only thing I I guess I will add is, so this is, this would actually be their third extension. So they they applied for one six month extension. Um and then a second three month extension three three months ago, and each. Uh permit extension is equal to one half of the cost of the original permit fee. So they they they're thinking, their rationale was they had requested six months before, but they were only given three months. And it is. Through no fault of their own that they need an extra bit of time to complete this, um so we're asking the council to consider waiving that.
Okay, and then and that they chose not to be here tonight for that request.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Council, President, sir, any other questions?
I'm just trying to understand why. This project. Is so this would bring it up to like two years for this home project.
Yes.
And what is? Can you remind me or clarify from the new members of the council? How the talents handle. And now I guess uh public projects that have gone on.
Well, I don't know, Doug, if Doug has anything to add to it. Generally, I mean, the the incentive is through the fees that there's every incentive to finish it as quickly as possible so that you don't continue to pay fees. I think in this particular instance. They have, I mean, number one, it's just a very large house with a lot of materials. Um they have an elevator and I guess some of the. Deliveries with the elevator has has been delayed. Um the only. Analogous. Project that comes to mind recently was. Um we did approve of forty five twenty four Dorset. We extended the length of the initial permit there, um because they anticipated the the timing to be delayed because of. Slow downs and acquiring materials that are kind of the hangover.
But also it would seem to me, and maybe the head attorney wants to. Um but the reason why, you know, the public policy is in favor of having these projects. Completed quickly because it's a burden on our on our citizens. And so um I find it unusual that they're not here to, if they're asking for. A a waiver of a fee and they're not here to explain the reason. I don't understand why the council would want to waive that fee. But anyways.
No further questions.
That's for a party. No questions or comment, though. I mean, they they did originally request a six month extension, in fact. Um and we cut it to three months at that time, so the logic they're saying is that it's not. Their particular fault that they're having to ask for three months. It was the council, in fact, who made that cut. That's one of them.
Okay, thank you, customer. Um Matt, we can, and maybe it's a question for Ron, we can. We don't need to comply with this specific duration of the best, right?
That's correct.
And extended by two weeks, three weeks, one month, okay? And um. We could weave, we could also stipulate. This existing extension maybe for four weeks. Is without being, but any subsequent extension would be subject to the full fee.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there, thank you, because I might have any questions.
Um, no, I don't have a question.
Okay, thank you.
Doug did have a comment.
Also, Mr.
They did state when I spoke to Mrs. Bogenthal that the reason they needed this extension was. That the elevator in the house is behind schedule and they can't get the equipment in, so there will be an extension to install the elevator. Specifically.
Okay, thank you. But their comments are questions. She said in her note that the elevator schedule can install now on July twenty fourth.
Okay, and then it comes right, you can.
I have a question to Doug. How confident are we in their estimate for the elevator installation?
Have no confidence at all because I don't know supply chain for the elevator.
Okay.
That seems to be the only thing remaining.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh are there any comments or questions from?
No. No, right.
And now let's turn it over to the council president. To the parade and lead council to the decision. But first, I wish that the applicants were here to. Just drive more into what's going on. I like your suggestion can be your. Of just. Given the notice of pause stage, short extension. And that results from results, and if not, then they'll have to pay for the extension. It's just my thoughts, Ron.
Yeah, I was gonna say maybe six weeks because I have what the requested at that point. So we have the line with that. I will be okay with that as well. Chandler.
Sure.
Okay. So then.
Okay, right, so I'll take your motion second. I do want to add one, I do want to women of history people. So, you know, some years ago, there was a a project on Essex Avenue. That I think I'm trying to. And I and I think it went on for more than two years.
Three years, yes.
And and so in the end. You know, I think that the council was granting like. Twenty four hour extensions or something like that, but but there has to be an incentive. Because the, you know, in in this particular project, we've got many, many complaints about that project. The impact it's had on the way of it, and so the longer this goes on. The the more it's a problem, but anyway, you started to add that comment. So are you prepared to make a motion?
Could I say one quick thing on that? Which is the incentive here is that after this extension, my proposal would be considered. For future extensions. I don't know what the. You know, for I'm gonna go back to the. They come back, we would want to consider.
So is that your motion, that's for a bar?
Yes.
And is that Mr. Ten Attorney, is that?
Well, if we approved the extension for six weeks without a fee, any further extension will require a fee for that motion. Is that? Legally intended.
It is, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, hey.
Just wondering though, for efficiency, whether the council wanted to do both tonight. So the applicants didn't have to come back the next month. So you could say we grant. An extension of.
No fee extension of six weeks.
Right, and a further extension if necessary of.
Up to this type here with this.
With a with a normal permit fee to be paid. So I don't know if that permit is needed.
Sorry, to the additional three months for the.
So that's like, that's our refashion.
Okay, devotion is that the town council will approve a six week extension without a fee. And up to three months, but. Beyond six weeks will require the removal.
No, no, uh. If I may, uh up to three months from this date of the motion.
There's the first extension that they requested.
Correct. No, no other questions. Hey, you guys for a bar.
Uh I have no questions on this one.
Thank you, Castor. Thank you, guys, for a.
I have no question.
Are there comments or questions for me?
No.
Thank you. Okay, with that, are you prepared to make a motion?
Well, I I just wanted to say one thing, which is that. You know, I think it's different, like if you get a permit application, like they haven't even started on the work yet. You know, to extend it for another six months, I don't think it's a big deal because they haven't started on the work. Versus when they're doing work and then they keep needing more and more and more time, you know, because that's a lot harder for neighbors. But I just wanted to make that comment for everyone.
Okay, excellent. With that, you would you want to make a motion, Castor, or?
I. Don't. Well, I'll jump in. I I don't have in front of me. I can't.
Okay, I'm sorry, for my group, the council approved the six month extension request submitted by Amy and Jeff. The ongoing construction project of fifty five twenty one S Street. Okay, you.
I second.
Okay, thank you. Is there a session practically neighbors here, you know, all this. I have this message, thank you. Next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of a building permit application. Submitted by Kelly Vogon on behalf of Jeff Nussbaum. For the construction of a ground level deck in the rear yard of the property located at forty seven sixteen Essex Avenue, Mr.
Yes, so you might remember this project, they actually just finished. A uh to an addition on the rear of the property, um kind of made the house. Most U shapes, so kind of two. Uh Ls on the end of it, and so this is um to just put a deck in between. Those in the back. The deck conforms to the town setback requirements, no trees or request for removal. Um and it doesn't trigger the stormwater requirements. Doug, I don't know if you have anything else to add on this project.
Only that the decks are ground levels and elevated to death.
Uh so that that concludes the staff report.
Okay, and is the applicant for his rep?
I believe. Kelly was going to join us. Um. We may just be ahead, so he. Hasn't joined, hasn't joined yet. So he's not, he's not here at the moment, I guess.
Okay, well, maybe he'll show up because we do, we do let everybody know. He can come twenty minutes before. Council, President, circa, you have any questions?
Yes, I guess this is for Doug, just to clarify. No stormwater requirements are are necessary for the deck because the deck is permeable. That right?
I understand, yes.
Other questions?
Thank you, Castor Bar. Uh no questions, Mr. Mayor. Council. That's all right.
No questions.
Are there comments or questions from? This is, I guess.
Uh no, no, no comments at this time.
Okay, council, you're ready to make a motion, I guess.
I can make a motion.
Motion to approve the link permit application submitted by. Kelly Bogdan on behalf of Jeff Nussbaum for the construction of a ground level deck. At four seven one six.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Is your discussion. Hearing nine, five. All this in favor.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now I know that we are. Twenty five minutes, we're we're in twenty five minutes in the news. So we we don't. It's our policy to not start.
Could we move the two agenda items that we created?
Exactly. It's just our job. Well, why don't we, why don't we? Why don't we start with the. The building construction board. Um since.
Do you want this back, Doug?
My report? Yeah, please start your report.
At forty seven nineteen Cumberland Avenue, application submitted to the roof deck at the rear of the house. Town issued a building permit on May fifteen for construction of the ongoing. Couple of weeks ago, I met with the new homeowner at forty nine oh five Cumberland. He was a former resident of the town. He's purchased the house, depending on demolishing the house and building a new one. He doesn't have a concept yet, so I told him that he gets a concept. Me, but to the world, so. At forty eight oh six, Grantham, the staff is preparing the. Free permits for the for the addition of that house. And then fifty six thirteen Warwick. Uh that's an ongoing permit. The applicants applied for a revision to add a deck at the rear of the house. Uh the staff has provided the homeowner with comments and they're reviewing the comments right now. That completely.
Okay, thank you, council, President, sir. No questions. That's our bar.
No questions.
That's our good one.
This, uh this thanks for the for the report, just to clarify, sorry, you mentioned four nine zero five, four nine zero zero.
Yeah, this note. Zero zero was addition on the side. They've gotten two extensions now. It's almost done. This is a cross street.
This is a new one that's not on this page.
Yes.
Okay, clarify.
They haven't found it yet.
But, thank you.
Got your room, man. You have questions?
Do we know the status of um that four eight one five Cumberland?
Yes, I spoke to the engineer today. They had to go for a re subdivision flat because of this. Straightly configured lots and they had to apply for a re subdivision flat at Parkland. And that triggered a tree analysis, so that's being reviewed right now. The record plan hasn't been re subdivision flat has not been approved. When that's approved, and they will be submitting everything to us. But they couldn't give me a timeline as of the day, they could stall out the facility for my week.
Okay, so, okay.
But it is.
There it's moving forward. It's just slowly.
Yes, very.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Review didn't give them comments. We just wait for comments to come back.
Is that, is that the tear down? By the Commonwealth. So I wanted to ask a rare question this part of the meeting, but I. So I know that a number of residents have written about that cherry tree. And I just wanted to make sure that the applicant is aware of that.
That's on the neighbor's property?
Yeah, there's a cherry tree. I think it's on the property.
Over the issue, I'm not.
I've I've shared that with, I've shared that with the builder.
Okay, good.
Well, they have a shared driveway too, so it's like, I mean, I think it's, I think it's four eight one five Cherry Tree. But there's a shared driveway between those two houses.
Oh, it's meant, I don't even know what the outcome is. There is a shared driveway, yes.
I just wanted to make sure because we've already, you know, uh six months ago, I think.
Dr. Feather is here too, so.
Oh, let's have second.
Be able to chime in on the.
That's after.
Um, yeah, I, he's aware of that, I think. It's, I get a tree inventory. There's some other tree issues on that property. That need to be addressed that are along the um. Eastern property line. Um, so. I've given those um that inventory to the owner and and to to Matt. Uh several months ago, so. Um we have to see how they respond back.
All right, so I would ask a ten attorney, wouldn't it be appropriate for the um. Staff to let the uh. Those that worried about that tree. To know that the information has been transmitted to the applicant.
Yes.
I I think that would be. A good idea. For the sake of transparency and everything else, so that um so they know that. That we've noted their uh their concerns, so that if you if you could. If you the council. Agrees that would be the right thing to do. Especially, yes, since you brought it up.
Huh?
Don't you think it'd be a good idea to let all those people know?
Yeah.
We have informed that we.
That, yeah, the developer knows about it.
Okay, thank you.
Or the owner.
Okay, so I know that now we are seven thirty, so I'm going to call. Public hearing motion to consider approval of a curb cut permit application. Submitted by Nancy Gallow for the second curb cut as a reasonable accommodation on the north side of. At fifty seven twelve Surrey Street, Mr. Ten.
Um. I gave the council a staff report uh, on this issue, so. Just as a point of clarification, the applicant is. Requesting a curb cut in the form of a depressed curb. But not an attached driveway. Um, the applicant indicated that. Having a driveway and a full curb cut. A full apron would require the Historic Preservation. Commission to review and issue permit. Um, and the applicant uh, has stated that they wish to avoid that. Um, the applicant is also requesting that the, excuse me, that the town pay for the alteration to the curb as part of their reasonable accommodation requests. Um. I just noted for the council that the proposed depression. Would be no wider than the twenty feet that is allowed for the town code. Um, and mentioned two of the, the criteria for new curb cuts, one of which is the uh. Uh, the same considerations of building permit applications. And the other is the existence of uh, curb cuts. On the property. In addition to. Reduction of space available for on-street parking, traffic, pedestrian safety. Location of utilities. Um. The. Applicant does have an existing driveway and curb cut. It's behind the house. Um. So the, there's a rear entrance at a fence and the applicant has. Stated that they have difficulty entering through the stairs in the rear of the house as well as. Um, the stairs and uh, incline at the front of the house, which is. Why they prefer to park. Where they have been on their lawn. Um. I think that's. Think that covers my report, more or less, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
And also, does the town attorney, uh, did you want to uh, add any comments to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, a quick comment. The council does have a memo from me and I would just. Add to what Matt has said by pointing out. We've suggested application of town code section one seventy dash three, which provides the criteria for a new curb cut. As the. A logical application, the, the most applicable code section. We don't actually have a, a code section for lowered curves.
Okay, thank you, Count. And is the applicant?
They said that they were not able to attend tonight.
Okay, thank you. Council, President Circa. What is? Can you? Far, far minus, what's the driver behind this?
So the applicant has. Been. Driving over the curb to park on their lawn to have easier access to their front door um, for. A while. The town code. Um, by adopting a section of the county code. Does not allow driving over the curb. And so that would be, that's the violation of. Driving over and parking on the lawn. The town does not have a specific uh. A specific provision related to parking on improved. Driveways. Um, but. The town, um, the town had issued a uh. A uh, a citation, thank you, a citation for driving over the curb and as part of. Discussions around that to try to come to a, a solution. The applicant had suggested what they had applied for and um, then staff had in turn encouraged them to. Submit that as an application so that the council could weigh in on. This proposal as well as um, enforcement of the, the, the code provision of driving over the curb.
I think. Correct, if I'm wrong, but the only. Resident. Or residents who have. Complained or commented on this issue have actually. Been addressing the car parked on the lawn. Not going over the curb. So are we doing, is this a roundabout way to address something that's not been actually solved? What's the concern?
The.
So let me rephrase the question. I know we, we, we issued a citation. Has any resident in town? Called up the town hall and said. I'm so upset because these people drive over the curb.
I've received it. I, I think I looked back and I had received um. An, an email in the past and I, I think it had, it had been an issue that my predecessor had.
Okay, so it is, I, and like, thank you.
But, but it is a violation. It is a violation of county law to park on the lawn.
But, but the county does not. Or stuff. Well. We've asked them to. And they, they have. I, I don't know. I don't know if Canada's unfortunate because we've asked them and they have. Um. Okay, I, I don't have any further questions. This will be the recent discussion we did.
Thank you, Castor.
I think I understand what they're asking. Um, I have no questions.
Okay, then, Castor. Two quick questions for the founder, Tony. First question is, will we within? You know, our jurisdiction to issue the citation?
Yes, because the, the town code. Incorporates by reference the county code, which prohibits driving over the curb. So the citation was for driving over. The curb and the explanation was that. The driving over the curb is prohibited because it can cause damage to the curb and the town maintains the curb.
And then, uh, the second question is, you know, we, we approved the lower mountable curb. Let's not worry about who pays for it. That would result in the car being on the lawn. Which would then be in violation of county code. Would we? Indirectly be in violation of the county code?
The town would not be. Being, resident would be, however, the, you know, the county has. Prosecutorial discretion to decide whether or not to enforce that county provision. And the county could, I mean.
The town will investigate. Even though we are facilitating the car being on the lawn.
The town, I'm sorry.
If we per, we permit the lower curb. We are facilitating the carving on the lawn. Are we somehow facilitating this residence violation for what we have just identified? Is not permitted by county code?
Are we aiding the betting commission of a crime? No, we're not aiding and abetting. We would be. You know, allowing the. Homeowner to park the car in violation of county law. However, we don't know whether the county has an interest in enforcing. That provision, but I believe the county does not.
I know you don't.
It was reported in the county. The county inspector came out. And upon being advised that. I hear your reasons, the county decided to take it.
Uh, I have one other question, uh, uh, Ms. Slaven for Matt. Matt, why has this been happening in the post place? You said she needs access to the front door. Why does she need access to the front?
She, she has a disability um, that makes it, she, she has to use a walker to, to walk and so. She, because of that, she, she said that she has difficulty using the stairs on the front and back of the house, so. Where that car is, it allows easier access on a non-sloped part of her lawn to get straight to her front door.
Is this an historic home?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did, Castor, any other questions?
Um. I did, I just forgot it, that question. Um. Oh, we, yeah, you were saying that the county hasn't chosen to, right, like. Um, the county hasn't chosen to issue a citation yet for it, but. I mean. Basically, they could, right? Like they could find, if we allow for this curb cut and then the car goes and parks on the lawn. They could. Decide to find. This person, right, and this household.
Sure, it's, it's possible. I'm. I. I'm getting that information secondhand, but it, it's my understanding that an inspector did come out. Speak to Ms. Gallow and. Decided not to take any further action.
Is there like, um, you know, where the sidewalk comes out to the street? You know, is there the possibility to put some sort of like ramp on, like there? That would then allow her to walk in, or you know, with the walker into the um.
I, I tried to look at options. With her, with her uh, like that. Um, there's kind of two. The two problems were that, number one. That would require her to park across the street and her and her son said that they didn't. They, they didn't like the idea of her having to park and walk across Dorset Avenue.
Because she can't. Well, but isn't the house, its entrance on Surrey?
It is, but that's where the, it slopes up, so she has to walk up steps to, to get there, so.
On the Surrey side. There are four steps she has to get up because of the hill on the lawn. If she parks on the grass. There's only one step she needs to get up to get into the house. It's the same staircase with different.
Just she's coming up.
Levels.
Oh, because of the.
So on one end, it's one level, on the other end, it's.
Well, so on the, you know, on, on ground, that, that.
Sorry to break the.
Okay, enjoy.
And then in terms of a, a ramp, I think the other complication was just finding the right. Structure to put there that wouldn't jet out into the street and in the traffic. Right, especially if she's parked across the street, which makes the street even narrower.
So the curb cut that is being requested is on Dorset?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, all right, I don't have any other question.
Okay, are there any comments or questions for the residents who goes?
Um, just one that was submitted by, uh, may, Lucy may want to say it now that she's here. Um, but she did submit one by email as well.
Well, I believe you have another one.
Can you, can you?
I'm Lucy Freeman.
Can you, can you come up with something? Tony, please.
I'm Lucy Freeman and I live on Ballstone and uh. Nan moved in, someone said, in seventy four, nineteen seventy four. And I moved in the following year, in seventy five, and we have been friends since then. I believe on the future, I think, and I think. Gail Schwartz, David Wal, David and Larry Walberg and uh. Sue Edson.
Um, I, I know that Gail is here tonight, but I don't believe anybody had submitted any emails.
Well, they said we've not been able to send it out.
When were those sent?
Um. Maybe over the weekend. Okay, anyway, anyway, Nan currently parks, uh, as you all know, she currently parks on Dorset. And parks legally on Dorset and. You know, depending on the time of day, when you see her eating out of her car, getting the walker out of the car, then walking. Across the street. Maybe at five o'clock in the afternoon with cars coming each way. The other time that I think it's really scary with her car there is when. Uh, it's okay with the B C C bus because it drives on the other side of the street. But the. Bus going to Westland is going down. On the north side, down uh. Dorset and so. That's during sort of morning rush hour and cars are coming up and cars are coming down and, you know. Nan's not involved in, but all the other cars and everyone else is involved with this. Uh, I think my feeling about this. A lot of many things is that. Uh, Nan wants to stay in her house and, and all of, you know, a lot of seniors want to stay in their house. I want to stay in my house. You know, all these people who send in emails, they all want to stay in. And uh, it. And the literature, you notice you will see it. People want students to stay in their homes and so I think. What can we do to sort of, so we said it's a small town. And we hope it's a friendly town and what can we do to help her so that she will be able? Do this safely. And I think uh, she's talked to me about what you just referred to about the county person coming and saying she doesn't park in the front yard, she parks in the side yard. Now, corner yards. Are, are complicated because what's front, what's side? Whatever. And I just hope that, you know, I'm glad that you were taking it up when I saw it in the town journal that. This was going to be on the agenda tonight. You know, I'm really happy that you're considering trying to help. A good friend of mine and many people.
Thank you.
Um. Well, uh, I did see that Gail Schwartz is here. I don't know, Gail, if you wanted to make a comment on this issue as well. Um.
Uh, I, I just would echo. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just would echo what Lucy said for the same reason. That she is. She says. And as a senior citizen myself, I can see. Myself in the future, maybe needing some accommodation.
Thank you.
It looks like someone.
And Jamie Kaplan has also raised her hand.
I, actually, it's Russell Green.
No, sorry, sorry, Russell.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, I'm using my wife's, uh, I think that. Hey, I uh, completely endorse the, the support to, to help this neighbor. Uh, make her house accessible so she can stay there. Um. Is, is there any way that, like? It sounds like this was something that she had been doing for a number of years before this citation was issued. Could there not be just some? Additional prosecutorial discretion so that. She doesn't get cited for going over the curb? And then we don't have to worry about. I don't know if this creates any precedence, like how difficult it is for, in Somerset to get a curb cut, but uh. We don't have to worry about creating a precedent and just turn a blind eye. That, I'll, I'll end my um, comments there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kind of turn it with you. Yeah, Chair of the Council President. Um, for discussion and. Being to your decision. So I, I thought that the uh. The residents, uh, words are very young. Very open about, you know, what can we do to? Um, accommodate a neighbor and uh. It would seem to me that a reasonable combination is just to let her park her car. In her yard. I mean. Or at least we won't prosecute it. We can even allow this curb half. Access thing. Um, I don't think that the. Town should pay for these accommodations, just like the ramp to the front door or something, but. I think we can. Just make it easy for this family to. Continue without. Then being harassed and without the town spending a lot of money and making progress. Those are my thoughts.
Right, I, I mean, um. I think that. Currently, she is bumping over the curb to park on the draft and has done that many times. Um, it actually is damages the car suspension over time doing that. And uh, lowering the curb will actually make it easier and less costly in the long run for them for that car. Um. At the same time, I think because the town um. Did issue a citation and uh, we have some feeling that it is wrong to bump over curbs and we should. Acknowledge that we have some role in it. Uh, maybe we should contribute to the um. Tasks of. Lowering the curve. Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm on the same page here. This is a long-term resident. I mean, been here longer than I was. Or I was born. Um, you know, this is, uh, we want our place to, you know, our, a small town to be open to. Folks at different stages of life. I think that's what makes us, for many ways, we are special. Um, you know, we talked about people complaining about this, but I've actually heard from neighbors who've been concerned. For, and, you know, and including one neighbor that frequently runs out of his lawn to help across the street. Uh, and, you know, worried about her crossing the street uh, on the north side. This is. Not only a long-term resident, but she's in her eighties, she has a walker, I mean. Uh, I think we should make. We should keep.
Uh, I think we should make, we should keep all of those pieces in mind. In terms of what we do, I I would be comfortable not worrying about what's happening now. I think what you were saying is the. Uh, and that's why I asked whether we were within sort of our jurisdiction to even issue the citation. Which has triggered all of this. I mean, if we had not issued a citation, none of this would be in front of us. And the second piece is if we are to do something, then yes, I would be comfortable as making accommodations to lower the curve. To make it easier, if according to what Robin is saying, either way is fine. We could be letting her do what she's doing now or lowering the curve and bearing the cost. Uh, to to lower the curve, which is different than a curb cut. Uh, I think that makes it easier for her to get out on the curb, so either way, it's it's fine, but that's where I'm at, and I appreciate the residents. Comments, including your lessons.
Um, yeah, I mean, I I I think that, I think that, you know. Perhaps like that blind eye thing, you know, and just let her park on the street. Yeah, you know, instead of like, I I don't, I don't think we want to get in a position where. You know, we, the town starts paying for, you know, these kind of one-offs. Um, and so to me, it makes more sense just to kind of let her. Do what she's been doing and to not really pay attention to it.
So, thank you, um. Ma'am, can we rescind the citation or we withdraw our full path?
Yes, that's possible.
So.
Go for it.
Maybe that's the only action we can take.
Well, we will have to deny this application, right? And then we have to propose a new red uh motion for rescinding the citation.
While we're while we're discussing it, we could also. Approve the curb lowering. And just not provide the funding or not address the funding at this point. There was some indication and interest in negotiations. We can see how that plays out when we can take the positive step of. Make that reason, I think it's a reasonable combination to allow it to be. And more accessible, so are you ready for that?
How about we, how about the motion is, one, we approve the request to lower the curve. Two, we rescind our citation.
That's it. Agreed. That's it, that also a second thought. Okay, so is that? We also need to address the reasonable combination request of the town paid for the work, so there would just be a third step.
Could they, could it just be to permit the applicant to drive over the curb as a reasonable accommodation?
Yes, right. But we also approved a curb, a curb lowering.
They're approving the curb lowering as reasonable accommodation.
What is the motion on the table?
We're we're approving the curb lowering and adding as a reasonable accommodation and two, we're rescinding rescinding our citation. Now, there was a request also.
Well, hold on a second, so that is what you originally. So, but then the town attorney has requested that this other issue be addressed, so. Perhaps you can suggest some language.
Yes, yeah, can Mr. Mayor, so. The motion would be. To rescind the citation for the missed one fraction. Grant the application for a lowered mountable curb as a reasonable accommodation. But such work must be done at the applicant's cost, the the council finding that. The request would not be reasonable if the town had to pay for the work.
Okay, is that?
Yeah.
Hold on, is that? This is your motion, Councilman.
I I accept that motion, okay, and you seconded it, right?
Well, well, the first part is you seconded, so.
I didn't say, I didn't know there was a motion on the table, just to be clear.
You said, I'm sorry, you said, okay, so so there was a motion that was made and seconded. Then when the county town attorney suggested amendment, that was really accepted. So now I think you need to make a uh, he he's saying that you need to. Uh, address the accommodation, so do you want to try to make a motion?
Which he did, I mean, there are three parts to it, as Rob said, it is, one. We are rescinding the citation, two, we are approving the request to lower the curb. Three, we are not providing funds from the town for that because it is sufficiently the accommodation.
Okay, is that what you said? Yes, okay, so that's the motion.
Next, let's have a big discussion.
Well, so I was just wondering, like, you know, if it. I I mean, if it makes sense to even like grant the lowering of the curb, but that's not even what she's asking for because. Then, you know, perhaps. You know, if she ever sells the house or something, then there's this kind of area where, you know, it's it's already there. Um, like, I don't know if we can, you know, uh, grant something that is just from the duration of the time that she owns the property.
I think the implication of if I.
Hold on a second, maybe the town attorney.
Yeah, so a reasonable combination could be durational conditioned on the applicant. And the approval could reflect that because the town does maintain the curb. And the town reserves the right in the future when there's a subsequent owner to restore the curb to its normal height.
But then again, that's kind of at the cost of the town.
Correct.
Can we just let her drive over the curb and keep letting her do that?
Saying, I think we should deny the per lowering application because we want to look the other way. That's what I'm trying to say, not to deny her request, but to deny this specific request triggered by the citation in the first place. So we rescind the citation and we deny this application, let her go about doing whatever she wants.
Can I, can I say something to that, which is that the motion will allow her to do what she wants? In other words, she doesn't need to buy, when we pass this motion, lower the curb, she can.
Okay, if that stays alive.
But she's doing it because the town cited her.
No, what Robin is saying, us approving it does not mean she will do it.
But but then doesn't it kind of set like something up for futures or, you know, like? Because I think she's only doing it because we.
We we should, I think is, we are bound, we're bound to allow reasonable accommodations. I mean, that is what the ADA is all about. Um, and that is a reasonable accommodation in this case. Um, it's also a nice thing to do for a resident, you know, that that's it, um, who is to say that?
I I'm not suggesting that we don't. Do that, we're just saying that, like, I I don't, I didn't know that she wanted to necessarily do that. And that would have been like set up by the fact that the town cited her, that's fine. So I'm not suggesting that we don't be accommodating to ADA.
I think we are all saying the same thing. I think I think that uh what Shannon is saying is that why even bother giving us approval? Because she didn't want it in the first place to lower the curve. And I think Robin is saying we can give the approval, it's up to her if she does it or not. We are not going to enforce it, we're not going to, you know, chase after her to do it. It just appears we made an accommodation, if she wants to do it, it's up to her. I think that's what you're saying. So, I don't know, you know, I I I'm kind of leaning to a Shannon's view, which is sort of, let's, let's. Let's not go down the path of opening anything. Let's just indeed let her do what she was doing all these years. And the way to achieve that is rescind and deny this specific.
My my problem with that is then we're not making any reasonable accommodations.
That is a, that is what she wanted all along.
Yeah.
Not to be cited, not to be harassed, that is the accommodation we are making. We are letting her do what she is doing.
I don't see that.
Okay, well, is there further discussion on that?
I, do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Steve, yeah. I understand you're saying. I think I lean towards Robin, it's too bad we don't have Debbie here to. And I think. And I think Shannon, you're correct, this, I think this issue has been some extent created by the town's. Engagement, so there's a responsibility, I also want us to. Address it as harmoniously as possible.
I I'm I'm willing to support the motion, but I think the town manager will need to communicate. The intent behind this or the town lawyer, so that she understands the the intent behind this.
In my, in my understanding of it, if I can just clear, get clarification, is that your motion, Robin, was to rescind the citation. Grant the application for a lowered curb and permit the applicant to drive over the curb as a reasonable accommodation.
You don't need to, we don't, yeah, well, right, well, we we don't even, we don't need to say that.
Okay. Um, the way the was, is that in the motion?
That's well, the only, the only reason I say that is because. If if she decides not to, then it maybe should be on the record that the town is permitting her to drive over the curb. If she decides she doesn't want the lowered curb.
I see, I see.
And that permitting that is part of the reasonable accommodation.
Is that in the?
That would be the true.
Is that an option?
It it wasn't expressly in the motion, Mr. Mayor, but I I think that's implied, but we could add it. In other words. What I had written in my notes is that rescinding the application, running the application, I'm sorry, rescinding the citation. Granting the application as a reasonable accommodation for a lowered curb, but that work must be done at the applicant's cost. Town council finding that the request would not be reasonable if the town had to pay for the work. Given that the citation is rescinded and that is sufficient reasonable accommodation. Because you're not.
So did you want to add anything?
I I liked Matt's language, do you mind repeating that?
I had just said to permit the applicant to drive over the curb as a reasonable accommodation.
So can that be added?
Still, I gotta thank lower the curb to facilitate.
So wait a minute. So, so can that be added, Mr.?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so you want to make a amendment to add?
Sure, the amendment is to lower the curb to facilitate the applicant driving.
He can amend his own.
Well, it has to be, do you don't want to do it? Doesn't matter, okay, what's your?
It's just to add to lowering the curb in order to facilitate the applicants driving over the curb park.
Is that, is that okay? Right, we just, we want to make. Is that okay?
It is, but it's not exactly what.
Yes.
Because, as I understand it, the council wants to give the applicant the option of not proceeding with the granted permanent application. So Matt pointed out, clarify point number one, rescind the citation and allow the applicant to drive over the curb. If she so desires.
Are you comfortable with that, man, from what he brought just then?
Well, um.
Because we could wrap that up if you want.
I mean, if we we rescind the citation, we approve the permit, we request a permit to lower the curb. Um, and. I I don't, we're not approving pause. Um, and we're facilitating facilitating her ability to drive over the curb. I I I don't think we need to say that she doesn't need to do this, I mean, it's.
Obviously, then you can amend that and, okay, if you just want to add it, are you want to add that as?
Okay, you're making a amendment, friendly amendment. Is along the lines of what Von was saying. Well, I'm friendly.
So, so. Uh, can you fashion amendment? For Council of Bar.
Well, there's an amendment to my motion.
Which is the language. Paper of the amendments.
Oh, okay, okay, so. Rescind the citation and allow the applicant to drive over the curb as currently constructed. To grant the application as a reasonable accommodation to lower the curb, but work must be done at applicant's cost. Council finding that the request would not be reasonable if the town had to pay for the work. Given that citation is being rescinded and it is sufficient reasonable accommodation to allow lowering of the curb. Rather than compelling our standard.
Like you're saying that, what is, what is?
No, it is in the first part of that.
So you're calling it the way you said it, yeah, okay, and you're okay? I I. Yes, okay, so and then, uh, so you'd second it, okay, so further discussion. Hearing that, I'll listen. Thank you. Next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of a building permit application. Submitted by Peter Lustig on behalf of Lustig Associates LLC. For the construction of a new home on the property located at fifty-five twenty-eight Trent Street.
Uh, thank you, so um. Uh, just give me one moment, sorry to. Um, so the applicant is Peter Lustig acting on behalf of Lustig Associates LLC. Uh, and has submitted an application for demolition and construction of a new home at the property at fifty-five twenty-eight Trent Street. And the complete application was submitted to the town on June thirteenth this year. Uh, the applicant submitted along with the application proof of emails to all neighbors. And evidence of attempted hand delivery at one of the neighbor's addresses, uh, where an email address was not available. The applicant met with staff several times over the last couple of months. Um, submitted a complete application in time as required by the code. The parking plan provides for up to four vehicles to be parked on the lot. The construction conforms with all town building regulations as the building administrator will expand on. The town arborist's report includes seven trees for removal with uh. One red bud to be saved on site and the rear neighbor's cherry tree, which should also be protected. And the town arborist can expand on his report. Uh, the slope of the driveway is seven percent, which is beyond the threshold required for permeable pavers. So due to that slope, permeable pavers are not recommended. Um, stormwater analysis confirms that the site meets the town's stormwater sediment code. And does not require variances for onsite infiltration. And we do have Chris Step from Bayland joining us so he can expand on his report for the council as well. Um, so given all that, um, the staff recommends that council approve. Uh, demolition dumpster, H V A C driveway and new home construction permits. And that the permits be granted under the condition that the applicant spent a wall check and height survey as soon as available during construction. And that the construction plans uh and construction activity adheres to the. Town Arborist Reforestation Plan and Tree Protection Plan. Um, so Doug, I will hand it over to you for your report on uh fifty-five twenty-eight.
You covered everything, just to add that county has to issue permit.
Okay, and is there, is there, uh, there's no.
Uh, yes, there is, uh, let's see, uh, Dr. Feather, if you want to um expand on your uh tree reports, that would be great.
Uh, yeah, there's, um, the plan they they have shown is um for seven trees to be. Um, removed. And uh, one existing tree on property to be saved as well as the neighbor's cherry in the back corner. So I suggested um reforestation, uh, one of the trees being removed is a street tree. So I'm suggesting um Yoshino cherry to match the other cherries on that part of Trent Street. Uh, they've also indicated they're going to plant a second street tree on the plan, that would be a Yoshino cherry as well. Um, and I'm also suggesting three canopy trees such as oak or maple. Or black gum and then three ornamental trees make up the seven. So the bonding requirement is thirty-five hundred dollars. Tree protection plan is to install fencing on the front red bud. And um along the back um. Back corner for the cherry tree.
Um, thanks, Tolbert, and then uh, Chris, um, if you're. You're there, if you want to expand at all on the. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Chris Step, who is our um consulting advisor on stormwater management. Um, so Mr. Step, if you don't mind, um, popping on is.
Not a problem, um, Matt pretty much touched on everything. Uh, the driveway is exempt from permeable pavers because of the slope. Uh, the remainder of the impervious area on the site is going to be treated E S D to the M E P. By infiltration uh through dry wells. Um, it's just important to note that the site will also need county approval for stormwater management. Uh, prior to. Uh, prior to moving forward to constructions.
Thanks, and, uh, I think that covers it for the staff report. Uh, yeah, Peter, is that, is that you that's logged in on the iPhone?
I think that's me, Russell Green on the iPhone.
So the applicant is in here.
See, I had just.
I see Christopher Stack.
That's our, that's our guy.
Well, we are early, we have a schedule. But even though we're not, we're not hiring. Yeah, but everyone's so.
I was just emailing with him, so I, I. I thought maybe this. This one was popping up as.
Was he, um, did he, did he say?
Yes, yes. Hi Peter, this is Matt in Somerset, how are you? Are you, are you able to log on? Oh, are you logged in as, is it saying, are you, are you on your iPhone? Okay, um, I think you you might be muted, can you hear us, okay? Okay, I think you're just muted then, um, so I think. I think if you push. Okay, I think if you push star six, that should unmute you. Oh, okay, you got, you got logged out, okay, um, do you need me to resend you the link? Okay. All right, I think.
Yeah, Mr. Last.
We can't hear you, though, you're, you're still muted. If you push, if you push star six, I think that should unmute you. All right, thank you, now we've got you.
Can, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Oh, good, we can hear you, okay, were you able to, were you able to hear the, uh, staff report?
Yes, I heard the staff report.
Okay, excellent, did you want to, did you want to add anything, um? Any comments on the report or add anything to your application before, uh, questions are asked?
Um, no, I don't think so, I'm, I just, just that the, uh, the trees that, uh, Tolbert, uh, mentioned are really just, um. Really shrubs, they're not really trees, they're ornamental, um. Uh, trees, they're not, um, uh, canopy trees, um. So, um. I, I think Tolbert said that I have to replace, um, up to seven. Trees, um. But not all of them being, um, uh, canopy trees.
May- maybe, um, uh, Dr. Feather can clarify that so you can make sure you're on the same page. Is that?
Yeah, right, by the town code, anything over any tree over four inches is considered, considered protected. There were a lot of trimmed trees, I mean, there would be trees if they weren't trimmed, I think there were. Five of them there in the front that I considered shrubs. But by town code, the rest are trees. So that's why there's seven trees. So, um. We're, we're suggesting canopy trees because the town wants to. Uh, try to get canopy trees planted on private property when possible. And, um, out of the seven, two of those can be street trees if you've shown on the plan. Um, then, um. Uh, three canopy trees and the rest can be ornamental trees or evergreen trees.
Could Mr. Lefty, did you want to comment on that?
Um, only, um. Uh, uh, I'd be curious to know how big the, uh, the trees. The canopy trees that need to be planted, how, how, um, mature they need to be.
Uh, two to two, that's in the report, two to two and half inch caliper, so it's just standard. Nursery grown trees, that's pretty much.
Okay, okay, great.
Okay, so, so is there anything else you wanted to add before? Okay, thank you, thank you so much, thank you for being here tonight, Council President Serco.
Thank you, um, we have a couple of questions perhaps to start with our, uh, town staff, um. The, the driveway. So I seen the report that says this has a seven percent grade. But and I apologize for being a smidgen late this evening, but I won't like pass it just to take another look at the lot. It's about the finest lot. We've got in Somerset. I think about the only. Angler drop in that lot is at the curb cut for the apron to drop down to the street. So, at least that's for the existing driveway. Now they're putting a driveway in another location on the lot. So I guess my question for the town attorney is, do we look at the? Slope of the ground where the current driveway is, where they want to put it in? And is the slope isolated or would be? Does it include or exclude the apron that drops to the street? Because I think you could have a driveway that for ninety-nine percent of this length. It's perfectly flat on that.
I think a reasonable interpretation would be to exclude. The apron, which will be. Concrete and. Only to include in the calculation that portion of the driveway. That. Would operate correctly as a pavement driveway. And I think it would also then be reasonable to conclude that we are measuring the proposed location. Rather than the existing location.
Okay. I don't know, Doug, or to our stormwater management consultants. Did you have any thoughts on the grade of the land?
Um. Uh, the grade is, I did check the grade and it was seven percent. But, um, in my opinion, it would be feasible to have that at a five percent grade. Uh, on the lot.
Okay. Thank you, did you have any thoughts on the driveway?
Their number was seven percent.
Right, some lowering, correct. Um, okay, um. Were there any drawings? Provided, perhaps for the applicant of what the house would look like, all I've seen are. Like building outlines. Like. Like top down. In, in every other building permit that I can recall. There are. Projections of the house. So I guess. The question for Doug, how do we calculate the building height if you don't know what the building is going to look like?
We have a full set of, uh, height plans, floor plans and elevations.
Okay.
Building height, that the applicant's engineer calculated the building height. Based on the lower average grade of the front of the house. Peak or the mean of the house.
Right, okay.
Can Mr. Lefty hear that? Mr. Lefty, you can hear. What Mr.? Hey, right?
Yes.
So, so did I miss it, Matt, or were those drawings not provided to us?
Um, I'm. I, yeah.
Yeah, that's all I thought, I think.
No, no, a full, a full set of architectural plans were provided, elevation sections, um, and core plans.
Okay, uh, thank you, so that's just an internal administrative. Issue, um. I'm also looking curious about.
I absolutely do.
Yeah.
Well. But.
Before, before we go any further, I think the council president has asked to see. A, a plan. A drawing, so, because I believe that that is required in this application, isn't it, right?
Yes, I, 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 I apologize.
This is an ad.
And perhaps some other questions are answered by. Material contained in these other, in the other drawings. Well, doing one of theirs with the next person. I'm looking at lot coverage. And I noted on the one drawing I had, um. It, it gives the roof covered. So I'm able to calculate from the roof coverage. That we're looking at a house that will. Cover two thousand eight hundred fifty-four square feet. Which is considerably more than the allowed amount. For info, so I'm trying to understand what's going on. And I guess, I'll probably need to review what Doug gets back here, so.
I just uploaded the elevation.
I, I will.
I think the, the applicant needs near. Yeah, it should be on the table. You, please ask your question on the, and send the applicant.
Um. And when I went to. This material, the only thing I could find that really gave me information was that. Roof coverage.
I think that the.
Yeah, so, Mr. President, why don't you, um.
Covered porches are not included.
It's just, it's just a segment, I mean, it's the, the.
We're looking at building permit site plan, page one of three. Oh. Trying to speak up and.
That's the same thing.
And. And, and our, our town engineer has explained that we're the, the old plan shows. Screen porch, it's actually an unscreened porch, is that correct?
Yes, it's covered fourteen screen. That included in building coverage.
Right, so it's not in. My coverage for info control. But the roof has to be covered in terms of. Water. From water manager, right? Well, I'm building height. You know, so this, this area. The water that flows on that roof has to be included, yes, okay. If there's a, yes. And. Let's see, I may have their.
What you had before was fine to zoom in a little bit. Yeah, just zoom in on.
All right, thank you, I, I don't have any other questions at this time, okay?
Everyone wants to make more here. I want to make sure that the applicant is able to hear. The questions and the answers.
I, um, having a little trouble hearing, but, um, um. I can, for the most part, make out the conversation.
Okay, fine, okay, Councilor Bar.
Right, um. You're covering the, uh, stormwater mitigation by installing core dry wells and I see that you'll. Check after. That the infiltration around the drywall is adequate for the drywall. My question though is, why, why did you go to drywells, that's tier two on our stormwater. Plan and did not put any, um, landscaping mitigation at all in. Um, why, why, why that?
In terms of, uh, capturing surface water?
Yeah, surface water, you know, for conservation landscaping or, you know, rain garden or anything like that, I, I, I'm certain that which is first. For us, that is the first tier, that's what we're looking for, um, drywells. Our second tier, yeah, if you can't do that, then go to drywall, or you can't, you can only do some of it, then go to drywall. But you've got nothing on landscape at all, that's why I'm asking you, why, why that?
Yeah, the, well, the, um. I, I, I don't really have an answer for you, a, a landscape plan has not been, uh, developed, um. It certainly can be, um. Uh, looked at with respect to, uh, cap- capturing, uh, surface water, the, the drywells, um. Ostensibly are for the, um, for the downspouts, uh, for the, um. Roof, uh, the water, uh, off the roofs.
Right, and, and, but I mean, so a rain garden can take downspout too and.
Right, right.
Downspout, and I don't expect the landscaping to take all of the water, so you probably need some drywall, but the question is, why is it no? I mean, it, it should be part of the mitigation plan that is our first year, it should be built in.
Uh, I, yeah, I, 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 I don't have an answer for you, um, my civil engineer, um. This is the plan they developed, um, to, to capture the surface water, um. Other, other means were not, uh. Considered, I don't think, by, by, by them, um, that's not to say that, um, that that cannot be explored.
Right, well, I mean, our stormwater code does say you should look at that first tier, which is landscaping first. I don't think you're going to be able to cover. All of the runoff from landscaping alone, but I think you could start there and maybe reduce the number of drywells that you're putting in. Um, but I'll, I'll leave it at that for just now. Um, but I'll, I'll leave it at that for just now.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Kumar.
Uh, Peter, question.
Yes.
Are you, I didn't quite get the gist of the exchange with our town arborist, are you in agreement with his proposal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, no more questions for me.
Okay, and now, Councilor.
Forgot, wow, what I was gonna say, but, so what, um, do you know what the size is of the current house as far as like the level of square feet?
I, I don't have that at my um. Um, in front of me, sorry.
Do we know that, Doug?
It's on the plan.
It, it is, it, it should be on the civil engineer.
Where is it? Is it two, two, one, four, two, two, four, one?
No, it's. This gray line here is the pound. But roughly the same size. Maybe a little bit larger.
So, well, no, I mean, it's got, I mean. So, but we don't have like an actual square footage?
I don't, it might be on the, imagine. They land for that.
Because now, does this mean that it's seventy-four, three, three?
F S B.
And so now, for the house. For the new house is, you know, just the one level across gonna be three thousand four hundred and thirty-three square feet?
Um, the, the proposed house?
Yeah.
The proposed house is on um. On three levels plus a lower level, so four um. The uh, total of, I believe, um, a little. A little over six thousand square feet, including the lower level.
I was just trying to figure out, like. You know, what, what the, like footprint, yeah, footprint, that's what I'm looking for, the footprint of the house on the lot.
I believe, I believe it's. Right around, right around two thousand, uh, a bit under two thousand square feet, I think the footprint.
Oh, currently, you mean?
No, proposed.
Well, it couldn't be, because if it was, if your house is gonna be over six thousand something square feet.
No, it's two, it's two thousand two hundred forty-one square feet. Is proposed.
Is the proposed house?
Yes.
And so then where do you get, like, on the stormwater management, um, that three, four, three, three? Total lot impervious area.
Because that, well, Chris, maybe Chris Step can. Uh, clarify that for us, but I believe that counts the covered porch. And the stoop. And the driveway.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, and so that is, and we don't know what that's compared to as far as what the house. Footprint is right now.
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't know what the footprint of the house is offhand, the existing house.
Okay. And then, um, when you guys are looking at, because it says that the. The drywells are going to receive water from roof downspouts only. Are you going to have sump pumps?
We will have a, we will have a sump pump in the basement, yes.
And where will that push the water to?
Um. I, I believe that that goes into um. Into the um. Sanitary sewer, but I, I, I can't be certain.
Now, that should. Be set up like that.
It shouldn't be.
Do we know, Doug, do you know from the plans where that would go to?
No, I don't know where it's.
Okay. So I guess that's kind of a question, because if it goes into a drywall, then that takes the space of the drywall.
No, it, it, it should not.
Okay.
Is that right, Doug? The county does not allow a subpump to outflow to a drywall, is that correct?
Are you guys, um, is the elevation of this house gonna be raised?
Um. I, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Like, is the, is the house gonna be? Built higher from the ground level than it is now?
Oh, yeah.
Are you going to raise the ground?
I mean, it's a one-story house currently, um, so yes, we're gonna be considerably higher.
You know, I, I'm asking, like, where it starts.
It is, if I can interject, I can, I'm a civil engineer, so I can read the plans for the owner, um. The current elevation, which you can see on the first page, it's, uh, says the first house in sort of great outlettering. So GF, the ground floor is two eighty-nine point five. And then the proposed house, which you can see in larger lettering above that, is the first floor FF will be two ninety-two point zero. So the first floor will be being raised approximately two and a half feet from the current elevation.
And so how does that impact the waterfall then to the neighbors next door?
Could you quantify that a little bit more?
So if the house is being raised from where it sits right now, like from, from this. From the looks of this, like, there's considerable drainage that also goes into this lot. And so I'm wondering, this lot takes on drainage already, and if now we're taking down trees. The footprint of the house is gonna be. Definitely bigger. Um, and so. Where, and then, and then on top of it, they're gonna be raising the house to start like a couple feet higher than it has been. So to me, that means that.
Well, they're raising the house, but that doesn't necessarily. And from what I, I'm thinking, I'm not the civil engineer for this project, I'm just trying to assist this discussion, um. So I'm not a hundred percent familiar with the design, but what I can see on the plans is that the. Elevations adjacent to the house are not changing.
Yeah, we're not changing.
The house is just gonna, the house, their first floor is just gonna be raised up. So there's just gonna, there's no, looks, there doesn't look like there's any substantial grading, so the, the changes. Adjacent to this house. Are gonna be the same as in the existing, there's no changes, it's gonna be the same as the existing condition.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's correct.
So the elevation of the actual land that's there is not gonna be changed.
Correct.
And so by raising the house from the first floor, does that contribute to the seven percent slope? That they now are showing for the driveway?
It is raising up, the garage is slightly lower, so if you look on that, your garage elevation is at elevation ninety. So two, two ninety. So they're raising the garage up by approximately six inches from the existing. Uh, ground floor elevation. Which should just be primarily for. Proper drainage.
And so then what about all the drainage that goes into this lot already, and where will that then go?
It'll. The drain is coming from. Let me just look at the map.
It's like.
There is a, yeah, there is a drainage rate map on the second sheet.
Where, where will that go?
The drainage is going to be continue. Should be funneled around the house, I can see the slope, so it should be. Based on the lot grading, there should be low points. Uh. Outside of the house limits between the lot line and the house, so the, the, the contractor, the construction contractor who's gonna be doing the lot grading will have to be putting in. Uh, doing some minor work there to ensure proper drainage around the structure.
Yeah, the same as it is now, that, that doesn't change.
But I mean, like, what changes is that. The house footprint is getting larger. And the trees are going away. And so there's going to be more runoff that's not absorbed on this lot. As it is existing. Right?
There's gonna be more runoff, and that runoff is being treated uh through stormwater management techniques.
How is that being treated? Because we only have drywells here that go from just the downspouts.
Correct. They're, they're not responsible for treating off-site drainage.
I know that they're not responsible for it, but like our town is, you know, looking into. Consider, I mean, they're not, they're not responsible for it from the Montgomery County, however, you know, we look at every, um. You know, development and stuff, and because what happens is it all compounds on top of each other, so.
I completely understand that, but there's, there was nothing in the count, the, the building code that I reviewed the plans for that stipulated that the, the um. Development needed to account for off-site drainage and treat off-site drainage.
Okay.
You know this.
What is, is that part of, like, what part of the stormwater management code go?
Yeah.
As that.
I agree with. With Chris Step's conclusion, the, the code requires a water drainage plan. For rooftop runoff. And not to treat off-site drainage.
But I can totally understand your, your position, and I could see that, how there could be some. Issues in the future, but that's not a consideration that I can, can make, because it's not something that I can look at as part of the town code.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's like other things that can maybe be done as far as like landscaping with, um. That Robin talked about, as far as how some of this water is gonna be absorbed, because there's gonna be more water that runs off from this house.
Okay, maybe ten attorney can help you to answer the question, now, what are the options that be? Um, council could inquire, that address the concerns that. Racing. Well. Go ahead, Mr. Bar.
Yeah, I mean, at, at the moment, they do have an appropriate um stormwater mitigation plan for the impermeable surface from the roof. Uh. That's the four drywells, they do the job. And they do a much better job than the houses there, that's there at the moment. Um, so there'll be less runoff overall from this property than there is now from the existing house with this plan. But with that said. As far as I can see, they have failed to follow our stormwater code because they did not look at. What could be done by landscaping first, that was my point.
Thank you. Making a decision, did you have any? Keep going.
Um. No.
I'm gonna be a second one anyway.
Okay. Oh, my other question, um, do you know if the roof on the existing house is asbestos?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Do you know if the roof on the existing house is an asbestos roof?
Um. I believe, I, I can't say for certain, but I, 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 I don't believe so, no.
Does Montgomery County, Doug, do you know? You don't know?
Yeah, very good, if you have any questions.
Does the county, um. Like, when you're tearing down a property, does the county check for asbestos removal as it gets destroyed?
I don't know the answer to that. The, I believe there are federal regulations requiring certain measures to be undertaken when you're removing asbestos-containing materials and lead-based paint. And. Some municipalities require. An examination and a report. Prior to a demolition permit being issued, and then. Those municipalities may impose conditions that. Federal regulations be followed when those materials are being handled.
But we are.
This town of Somerset does not currently do that, and I don't know whether the county does or not, Doug might know what the county does with respect to the asbestos and lead.
Yeah, uh, about a year ago, another project, I asked the county what they required to do demolition permit. And one of the things that they do not check is for asbestos. It is a complaint, then they will address, that's not part of their checklist.
Interesting. Um, okay, I have nothing further right now.
We're giving a second round. Council President. Yes, thank you, um. Lots of good information here, and some follow-up questions on the drywells. I notice this is on plan. Number three. A sediment control item. Uh. Point two dash zero seven five seven, I'm not sure which button we use, anyhow. It states that the volume provided via drywells may not exceed the maximum one-year storm, and if you look at the listing of the four drywells. Fair enough, the. Volume of the final control. Is. Basically, it seems to average one cubic foot less than the runoff to be anticipated from the one-year storm. So. What does this mean? Am I misreading or is this an issue? I used to speak for our stormwater experts.
Um. From what I'm, from my understanding of your comment is that you're saying that the. The drywells are sized slightly larger than the anticipated storm event, is that correct?
No, what I'm saying is they're sized slightly smaller than the anticipated storm that, by my read of the drawing, which, and I could be reading it wrong, that's my reading. For example, for roof.
Oh, yeah, you saw the one CF.
Yeah. So it's kind of pretty close, but it looks like it's a little undersized for three of the four wells.
Seventeen, one seventy-eight, one fifty-nine, one thirty-one.
Yep, those are the ones.
Yeah.
Those are the numbers I'm looking at.
Yeah, they're, if the one CFS, yes, that. By the letter would be undersized.
Okay, thank you. Is that helpful, thank you, Councilor Bar. Uh, if I have a question, that looks. Thank you, Councilmember Kumar.
A quick follow-up, um, a landscape. Plan has not been submitted. Correct, correct. And we didn't, we have not. Changed the sequence of this in the code yet. That we. That it be submitted with the application.
So right now. So, right, right now, the code provides that a landscaping plan is required if. Reforestation is proposed in exchange for a tree removal.
Which in this case, it has been proposed.
It has not.
Could, could be yours to get, if you're trying to make point about, that I made. Um.
Hold on one second.
You'll talk about that, would you?
Uh, okay, then I missed, that's why I asked the earlier question, I thought that. Uh, there was a report, we have a little public, um. Power. Dr. Kedda, have you made a recommendation for reforestation?
Yes. Yes, we.
Like numbers, it's not.
Yeah, it's number, it's types and numbers, not. It, it's not really a landscape plant, they can plant the trees wherever they want on property, except for the. Um, the public trees, which they've indicated they're gonna. He's gonna plant two in front of the house.
Got it, appreciate it.
Thank you. Being done, okay, Councilor Bar, give me further questions.
Uh, no.
Okay, do we need to go to?
No.
Okay, okay, uh, Mr. Town Manager, has any, uh, citizen? Indicated that wish to counter on this?
Uh, no, no comments.
Okay. And now, uh, I'm not using a script tonight, but uh, you, do I need to have the, uh, applicant's opportunity to?
It's there, right, yeah, okay, but.
So thank you, this closes the uh, public hearing portion of the public hearing. Oh, come on, and now I will turn it over to the Council President for his liberation decision. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, thank you to all the council members and participants, a lot of. Information going back and forth and good questions. Um. I appreciate that the applicant has attempted to address our, our new code and stormwater requirements. Appears like they would be. Better stormwater retention than what's currently located there. That said, I have two significant concerns with this proposal. One is the driveway, I think that we would have to specify that it should be a curving road driveway, because what is. As discussed by one of the experts, it can be, it can be, uh, built with a five percent grade. Um, and I think we could specify that. I also think that. And to come back to us with a plan to actually hold the amount of weather generated by one-year storm. And somewhat. Thank you back, the numbers still add up. To my thoughts, Rob.
Right, yeah, I. Five percent grade is absolute borderline on whether it, it actually works or not, so, I mean.
the five percent grade is absolute borderline on whether it, it actually works or not. So, I mean, it, it if we can't get it to under five percent, it's not worth actually changing it to permeable.
It's, it's pretty fine.
The, the, the bigger point for me is that it doesn't seem to be communicated, that it's communicated to the applicant. The applicant haven't read our stormwater code appropriately where you really should look at surface stormwater mitigation approaches, landscaping approaches to stormwater mitigation first and see how much you can achieve by that. And that, things like conservation landscaping, things like rain gardens, that, that, that's the idea. You capture as much of the runoff as you can by that, then you move on to dry wells. And if you can't do it all by dry well, you end up with rain tank. That's how we designed the code. That message does not seem to have come through here, so they've, they've gone to dry wells, which is kind of the default meth- method. And I'm saying, no, that's not what we're asking. We're saying go to landscaping first. And only if landscaping is insufficient, then go to dry wells. That's the point.
So what? Thank you, Rob.
Well, I mean, I appreciate Robin's point. But, you know, it is, as it's proposed now, the application is consistent with our code. I'm not interpreting that it's not consistent with that code. It's consistent with that code. I, I love to hear. The numbers don't add up.
The volume of water can be held by the dry tanks is less than the amount of water that would flow through roofs. You know, one-year storm is that because they didn't size it correctly. I don't know why not. It's very close.
Okay, so apart from that, we discussed one cubic, you said one cubic.
For three of the four tanks.
Okay. Okay, so apart from that, now I understood your point earlier that this is, appears to be consistent with the code. But I appreciate Robin's point that um you know, we don't have a clear sense of the landscape efforts, which seems to be material here.
Okay, no landscape efforts.
Well, they, they were not required, so you know. So that's where my mind is, right?
Well, and also, you know, there is, there is substantial runoff that comes from these other properties to this property, um, which plays in part with the landscaping and with the amount of trees that they're trying to take down. But I thought that Montgomery County looked for more than one-year storm.
Uh, no, uh, they, they, they don't, um. Or I think it's not, it's not the county code that we're looking at either. The issue is that um the state's requirement on a one-year storm is currently at two point six inches. They're gonna revise that because in fact, one-year storms are considerably above two point six inches now, but that's not been revised. So currently, when aiming at a one-year storm, it is two point six inch of the rain that you manage. Currently, they're not quite managing two point six inches according to what Steve was saying with the four dry wells.
But I mean, even in the calculation on the second page, the E S D computations, it says one point eight inches.
Well, I saw some other numbers.
That, that's to do with the, the soil requirements. If the soil is not an A-class soil, then there is some recognition of that. And so therefore, we find it down some and that. I believe.
Correct. It's the, the, the max is two point six inches, but depending on your soil types, there's a shift and your impervious area covers is a shifting scale within the manual. So if you look on that page, the requirement for them to treat is the is the one point eight inches where they're providing one point nine two. Overall, they're providing one point nine two inches uh, for the whole for the whole site.
Do people now usually plan for more?
No. No, they meet the, no, in my experience is that you, you meet the letter of the requirements as they're written. Sometimes you'll, you'll be a little bit more if you know, it just works well into your design, but obviously overtreating is, is a cost and we want to, and the, any developers want to mitigate those costs.
Right. It just seems like, you know, with Steve, your point that it's not even covering a one-year storm.
Overall, which is why I recommended this project for approval. It is covering it. I know the, I know pointing out that the two dry wells were size one cubic foot less. Um, most likely is a rounding error in terms of the calculations. Um, but you know, if the overall, the site plan meets E S D to the M E P.
It, yeah, I, I, I believe you're right there, but as I said, it, it doesn't meet our code because there was no consideration of surface.
I, I reviewed the code and I just reviewed it again right now. I'm, I'm struggling to find the tiered list that you had mentioned. If you could point me in the direction of that, because I
Wrong. Sure, the count section is one twelve hyphen fourteen. A four.
Hold on.
A one.
A one, twelve fourteen.
Okay, thank you, sir. This is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. One twelve hyphen fourteen D as a dog.
Correct.
Then four A one.
A one, all reasonable opportunities for using non-structural practices, correct? That, that, okay. Um, uh, just so the council member knows, um, rain gardens and landscape infiltration are structural practices. Um, non-structural practices would be your disconnect credits, so.
Okay, can we go to our definitions in our time code at the hall?
Okay, so, uh, are you continuing?
No, so, um.
We, we, we're not, I think we're still going to answer a Robin's question.
I believe that we in our time code are defining rain gardens and conservation landscaping as non-structural and dry wells as structural.
Okay, that's, that's in conflict. That's, that's just so FYI, that's in conflict of how the state defines structural and non-structural.
Do you understand that?
Okay.
True that dry wells are not structural in the state code. I do understand that, yeah.
Okay, that's just so we, it's my, that is my missle that, that there was two definitions for.
Okay, so this is a case, you debate between all of you with the town attorney. So are there any, let's just go around. Are there any more questions or comments or are we ready to or recommendations, perhaps some recommendations on?
I have a question. Do we, um, so did this property, then it appears that I did not need a runoff waiver from the county?
Uh, they, they're, I mean, I, I kind of haven't reviewed it yet, but I believe their plan right now will satisfy the county, yes.
But like there was like this nice little chart that shows like, you know, what's covered, what's not covered. Like, I don't see it in these plans. Have you seen it? Like how much, what the change is and you know, all of those numbers?
I think each developer has a discretion on how they you're right.
Yeah, like, you can see, yeah, very, yeah.
That, 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 that is, I believe, part of the town's submission. I don't think this does not count here with you.
And then does our code, we, are we only asking for a one-year rain?
Yes, that's what's in our code.
From the rule.
From the root, but does that, um, and then we go, we dig into the different soil amounts to then say like, oh, well, this one only needs one point eight, even though other soils.
Um, I'm, I'm letting that go for the moment. Um, we
We don't hear it.
Yeah, the, the code just requires the cubic volume of runoff for the one-year storm event to be captured.
But do we?
We don't require current number calculations or, but I would, I would defer to our stormwater consultant as to how our code should be interpreted and applied.
But do we, but we don't state what that one-year amount is.
Yeah, we don't because we leave it at the one-year amount as defined by the state. Um, because the state, and the state sets two point six inches. But the state is likely to change theirs in the next couple of years um, because of you, there, there are a requirement to do that actually. Um, so therefore our code will often automatically change when the state changes. That's why we don't have two point six inches in our code.
But, but this one is only covering the one point eight because of the soil.
That, that's, that's what they've followed the Montgomery County soil requirement. We actually don't have that in our department because some of our mitigation measures do not depend upon the soil. Rain tanks do not depend upon the soil.
So technically, this doesn't fall under our code because it does not cover a one-year storm event.
That's true, yeah.
Except I think there is this stormwater consultant that is interpreting what's possible on the lot. That's my understanding. And based on the soil, you know, the other way to look at it is based on the soil, this is what's possible on the lot. Is there an invasion? You know?
Well, this came from the engineer, not our consultant.
But our consultant has reviewed it, right? And, and cleared it. That's why we have the consultant, right? You know, and but I, but I.
Technically doesn't fall to our code.
Yes, except I think the intent of our code was we follow the county on this. We want the mitigation, but the level of mitigation we followed up. That was sort of the square because of the changing landscape of that.
I mean, frankly, I'm just concerned that there is going to be a lot, I mean, one, a one-year storm now is nothing. Like, it just rained seven and a half inches in the Hudson Valley over four hours.
Our code says a one-year storm. We have to go with that.
Right, I know, but our code says a one-year storm. It doesn't say one-year storm minus the soil levels.
No, it doesn't. That's true.
So don't say that, yeah.
Then I think the, the, at the same time, there appears to be some minor errors in the plans. Right? It would be a rounding error. It's unclear. We would, we need, we need clear plans. There appears to be some gaps that Shannon identified. Just to be clear that there you know, there are some, right, Steve? I think you identified some minor errors. It's been acknowledged it would be a rounding error. When we are reading the plans, we need to have clear plans that give a clear sort of exact capture of cubic feet of water. We need that. I think there is a point that Robin is making whether they followed the left, the sort of definitions as per the code. And I'm understanding that they did not follow that in, in the sense that they consider other things. Maybe what we intended to. So there seems to be a challenge, a gap on that. Those things, I think, are understandable. The rest I think we, we are in difficult territory, given that I think it isn't consistent with our code. I think it needs to pieces from my perspective. There is some error in the plan and then that is potential that there was a misinterpretation of the definition. Uh, based on what we have in the code. Is that correct? Am I summarizing?
It looks like they did, um, this read our code in this. And that's true for my help. So I can just, I appreciate the, the summarization and I, I think it's accurate that we as a council share concerns with the applications for water management in this permit application. I guess, whatever, since we're into this, I think that the driveway is a more significant yet more significant. I think that is a, a real issue. I don't and, and this might be placed for Ron to weigh in, but what I heard was that the garage is going to be elevated six inches from the current soil. Well, that means that we now have elevated or increased the angle of the driveway to meet this new house design as opposed to the way the soil is located on the lot today. I think that's the builder's choice. If we don't, if we don't draw the line, every builder is going to do some elevation so they never have to put in permeable paper. And I just think we need to say that they need to put in a permeable drive. We need to make it work with less than five degrees slope or for the terminal.
Uh, I think that's fine. The question is, does that call from it as stipulate that? Would be a good question.
So are you prepared to make a question?
Well, so, so that's the question on it. You know, they say it's seven degrees. I say it could be five degrees within our code. Our inch, our consultants, as they can do the driveway at five degrees, that's within our code. Do we have the authority to?
Yeah, I think that would be a reasonable interpretation of the, the code, that the code only exempts driveways that cannot be constructed with a slope of five percent or less, or I'm sorry, less than five percent. But if the facts presented are such that it is possible to build a driveway having a slope of less than five percent, like the council could condition approval on that modification.
So my inclination is to so stipulate on the driveway and to request that they revisit the stormwater management and demonstrate how they have explored, um, other medications that needs.
So you're ready to ring garden.
Are you ready to transition? Okay. I'll, I'll try. I think I will need okay. I think that the council disapproves building permit application as submitted by the last, last, so I'll see construction new one probably located by twenty eight transfers with the following corrections or, or following issues to be addressed. One driveway should be constructed with a less than five degree slope with permeable favors. To stormwater management um, should be tiered as directed by the code. Um, to free the dry wells need to fully have a full capacity to cover a one-year storm.
The mitigation plan as a whole needs to have.
Okay, Mr. Town Attorney, is that?
It is, Mr. Mayor. One suggestion. You could just allow the applicant, application to be continued. Oh, then the applicant could correct those issues and come back with a revised application. With a denial, I'll have to prepare the decision. Written decision, we could save some costs there.
Instead of costs and times.
Okay, so how should, so instead of the, to?
The, the, the application would just be continued for the applicant to address the issues identified by the council.
Okay, so is there a second on that?
I second it.
Okay, discussion.
Um, also, like with the sump pump and where that would go? Clarification of that, yeah.
So that's an amendment.
Yes, friendly, sir. So you accept your amendment? Okay, so for the discussion and the motion. Hearing on all this. All this, thank you very much. Excellent. Next item, public hearing motion to consider adoption of charter amendment resolution one twenty-three and amendment to the town charter section eighty-three twenty-one to extend the rights of the intent of Somerset municipal elections to all residents sixteen years and older, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, uh, this has been discussed. Um, I don't think I have very much to add to it. Um, the only thing that I would say is, um, when you're going around for council comments, um, council member Heller asked me to read something for the record. But I, I think this stands for itself and has been discussed enough that everybody knows the issue. Um, so I'll turn back.
Okay, thank you, council. President, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, but just as a courtesy to Debbie, just read us a short.
No questions. Okay, council.
In much of the state, I have no questions.
Okay, now, since it's her.
Uh, so council member Heller wrote and said, I, I'm sorry to miss the meeting. Uh, so council member Heller wrote and said, I, I'm sorry to miss the meeting tonight. I'm especially sorry not to be there to vote on lowering the voting age. As you know, I was not in favor of this, but the results of the town referendum, referendum concluded that we should lower the voting age to sixteen. If I were there tonight, I would be voting for it and expect that we would be a united front. I wish that I could vote in absentia, now it is time to engage our teams in the workings of the town.
Okay, thank you, council member, can you give any questions? No question, that's your work.
No questions.
And I think our, our other comments or questions from our citizens.
Uh, yes, uh, uh, Lucy Freeman had submitted a comment, Lucy, I don't know if you wanted to. Speak in person or if you would like me to, uh, read or reference your email. Well, Lucy had spoken in favor, as you might suspect, uh, of, of this. There are no other comments.
So, um. Uh, Mr. Attorney, do they, how does the, um, is the motion?
We need a, a motion to adopt charter amendment resolution one hyphen twenty three.
It is as simple as that, right?
Okay, I, I move that we adopt, um, charter amendment resolution one twenty three. To extend the right to vote in the town of Somerset municipal elections to all residents sixteen years of older.
Okay, and then, um, before there's any discussion, um. What is the process now, Mr. Attorney?
Right. After approval tonight, a copy would be posted at the town hall. For forty five days, published in a newspaper of general circulation, four times, once each in consecutive four weeks. To allow a referendum petition to be filed, that refer, referendum petition.
It does change the law on publication.
If that referendum petition is signed by twenty percent of the voters, then it would be voted on. If there's no referendum petition, it becomes effective within fifty days, as council member Barr noted. The legislature in response to a request from section three. Of the village of Chevy Chase has changed that law, but that new law doesn't become effective until October. Under the new law, you only have to publish one time in a newspaper, so it saves us cost because. Publication does have to occur in a newspaper of general circulation, which is defined by law as one that's auctioned for sale. Right now, we don't have a lot of options, but we, will we have it, but.
Hold, hold on, okay, uh. Is there, uh, for the discussion? No, hearing in, others in favor. I, all this is gonna stand here image, next item. This would be a motion to consider introduction of an ordinance banning invasive plant species during new construction. As recommended by the town environment committee, Mr.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, uh, this ordinance we discussed at the work session, uh, in June prohibits planting non-native invasive plants during new construction. And I did attach another copy of the environment committee's recommendation. Um, so, uh, I included a, a possible council action on that. I also note that the environment committee chair, um, partner, son is also here.
But we don't have a like a carry on. Council president, sir, do you have any questions? Councilor.
No questions.
Counselor.
Uh, no question, except did we resolve? The, the, the definition of invasive.
So in drafting the ordinance, Mr. Mayor and council members. Wasn't clear to me exactly what definition we should have for invasive species. Environment committee pointed us to some helpful websites, looking at those websites. I, I found or would recommend one of two approaches, one. We could adopt the invasive plant list published by the Maryland Department of Agriculture. As it may be amended over time, or alternatively, we could adopt our own list as a town and do that by council resolution and update that as we. Need to without amending the code, so the code could just say the list is that adopted by resolution of the council from time to time. So, e- eventually before adoption, the town council should decide what invasive species list should be. Attached, but you know, for, for now, you.
We don't need to do that tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a question?
I move, we introduce ordinance banning invasive plant species during construction as recommended by.
And requires three votes, all those in favor. Okay, so it's introduced and now, um. There's still a process and someone will write a, yeah. Someone will write an article about it. Next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of a selection of LED bulbs. For the proposed LED streetlight replacement project and amend the FY twenty four budget reprogramming one thousand fifty. Hundred fifty five thousand hundred thirty four dollars from uncumbered reserves to line six nine two oh four lighting. Mr. Town.
Yeah, uh, this is another topic we've discussed, uh. Many times over the past few months, um, so I won't, uh, I won't. Take up your time by reiterating those points, I'm just to, uh, mention again, as, as the mayor read that. This as a, as a budgeting, uh, as a, uh. Due, due to the budget, what we originally had done was to budget part of this project in FY twenty three. But because we, um, are now passing in July, uh, we also need to move the. Money that we budgeted for last year into this fiscal year.
And that could be true.
And that could was.
Okay, thank you, council president.
Let, let me do a first motion, which is a move, we untable this motion from the June meeting, consider it now.
We do it when, actually.
Can we discuss it with, I don't think, in order to discuss it, don't we need to go on table at first?
Uh, I don't think so. Under Robert's rules, I, I believe so, but you know Robert's rules better than me, Mr. Mayor.
But we can have.
So in tabling, I believe.
Uh, well, I, I mean, we just both on table, it's on, you know, it's.
Okay, go, go, all right.
I, I move, I, I, I move, we untable the motion sent June to approve the selection of the. Second, all, all of your favorite.
All right, okay, we can go on. I, I think probably when the agenda was passed.
Uh, yep, there you go.
So this is a question. No, I, I don't.
Um, that, that, I. Will say at the outset that I don't agree with the town manager's recommendations as presented in the front yard. But that's for our discussion.
Did you have any questions?
No question, what, no questions.
Thank you, councilor.
Um, I don't have a question on the budget piece, I was going to speak forward on the proposal, is your proposal still the same, Matt?
My recommendation is the same, but I also laid out, you know, there's alternative options as well.
Just for the record, you might be.
Yeah, I mean, my, my recommendation was the seventy watts at the straightaways and then one hundred watt at intersections.
Uh, have you received any alternative proposals either from the environmental committee or others?
The environment committee had recommended that the town use low wattage LED lights, um. The chair Rubenstein, Rubenstein, uh, had come to a previous meeting and select suggested. Um, the lowest possible LED lights, um, so the fifty watt equivalents. And, um.
That would practically mean what on the street area.
That would, I, I believe that. I believe that the recommendation was fifty watts everywhere with seventy watts at intersections on Dorset Avenue.
Fifty three away, seventy section.
Seventy intersection on Dorset Avenue specifically. And then the survey results, um, there, there was. You know, not, not a huge response, but the survey preferences were fifty watt at straightaways and one hundred watt at intersections.
Okay.
Is that, is that, okay, councilor.
So, tonight are we not, I don't have a question on the budget thing either, but are we gonna decide what wattage to use tonight?
Yes, hopefully, yes.
Okay. Okay, great, or let's just.
Yeah, do you have any, do you have any questions?
For who?
Okay, okay, fine. Okay, so are there comments or questions from our residents?
Um, if anyone wants to testify, please, if anyone wants to testify. Big no, or whatever was said.
Yes, I think I see you for one, please, I have a lot of time to beautiful party and, and say your name.
Hi, my name is Rob Woods, I thought we were going to be a hundred people, I wrote a speech.
Please read it.
Uh, you may notice I'm wearing my Firefly t-shirt. Uh, because fireflies are one of the wild species in Somerset that could be negatively affected. If we make the wrong choice about our street lighting. I could just as well wear a honeybee t-shirt or one featuring birds or small mammals or even children or other human beings. The fact is Somerset celebrates being a tree city. We are proud of the work we have done to reduce pesticides. And noise pollution and other factors that would encroach on those of us who share this one hundred and seventy nine acres. In this little bit of Montgomery County. So how about light pollution? Although I've been on the environment committee since before the committee existed. And in all those, all those years, we have been working to bring lower cost, less wasteful street lights to town. I'm not speaking officially on behalf of the committee, Barton is here to do that. Nor am I here to debate why the current proposal would far exceed the amount of light chosen by our neighbors in Tacoma Park. And the village of Martin Seditions. Whose residents studied the issue and chose wattages similar or less than what the environment committee proposed. In fact, surveys of Somerset residents in twenty nineteen and again this year. Found that our Somerset neighbors preferred lower wattages. And one last thing I do not plan to discuss is the added cost to the town's electric bill. If we increase the amount of power consumed every night of the year for years to come. Those are certainly, there are certainly members of our town council who are more concerned and aware of the town's budget than I am. My concern is for the people and animals, including fireflies, who live here. If you know where I live, you know that my house and yard are not much affected by streetlight pollution. And that's the way I like it. No one moved into Somerset because they wanted to be like downtown DC. Where you can read a book all night long under the humming lights. We like the gentler, more natural environment. So I suggest the following. One. Keep the street lighting the way it is, I, I don't do LEDs, I just mean level light. Keep it the way it is for the majority of cases. Trim the trees, aim the lights to make better use of what we have. Two, if there is a need for more lighting on some of the through streets or some busy intersections, do it. But do it selectively, no town intersection needs to look like little balls in Dorset. Do it for safety, not because bigger is better. And through. If in the future. A need comes up to increase the lighting on some street or intersection, do it then. With a bit of care and common sense, we can preserve what we love most about our town. And be open to improvements when the need presents itself.
Thank you very much.
My name is Paige Woodley and I live at forty nine twenty two Cumberland Avenue at the very bottom of the hill. And in preparation for tonight, my words will be short, but I actually read. The various town charter and these words jumped out at me that the charter establishes eighty three seventeen. Establishes that the town council has the power to adopt resolutions for the protection. And promotion of the health, safety, comfort, convenience, welfare and happiness. Of the residents of the town and visitors thereto and sojourners therein. Council members and mayor, you have a huge and heavy responsibility. Making these decisions for those purposes. And yet I want to add that we all recognize that we live in an increasingly interconnected world. We cannot only focus on the health and safety and welfare of the humans living here. And as Ralph so eloquently just spoke, there are other organisms, beings, animals, birds, insects that also rely on. You, in your decision making. We humans also have our own interconnected balance that we must follow. Yes, as council members, you are proposing to make safe choices for the amount of lighting in our town. Riders also have a requirement to, they have a contract to follow the rules. To drive safely within speed limits. Pedestrians at night, I wouldn't say add, also have a responsibility in their contract. To not just go willy nilly across the streets, stay on the sidewalks, the protest markets. All of these things are interconnected with a light issue. I live at the bottom of Cumberland, as I said, I have a light at the corner on my property and Devon Lane, which shines through my windows. I have another light on Devon Line, Lane, which shines through back windows. Not quite able to read and yet I don't need to turn on a light at night to go through my phone downstairs. I urge you to err on the side of lower LED wattages, fifty watts in most areas. And I would say seventy watts at the intersections. Then again, I'm not an expert on that, but I would say use caution and think of and think.
Hi, everybody, I've been up here before, Bart Rubenstein. Uh, Chair of the Environment Committee, uh, as you can see. These are ready from one person, Ralph has spoken, you know, I am part of the committee. There are imposed of a lot of very. Interesting people and a very dedicated group of people that are focused on the environment. We're not just sort of billy downing around, we're not just sort of. Thinking of ideas to save the environment without much knowledge, I mean, they, this on committees in the county for, you know. Uh, environment, uh, related issues, um, and. Anyway, I think what Ralph said in particular was just a reference to all the other, um. Types of things that have happened already, uh, in our county, in our state and also across the country, um. Use in the choo, the choice of low wattage balls is not something that we. On our own, we are basically following or piggybacking ideas that are already going all across the country. So this is not a little special event that's going on in Somerset, we are part of a much larger movement that's happening. And we need to be a part of it. You know, we can pretend, we can pretend not to be a part of it, but we are a part of it, you know, and you can decide. Tonight that we don't want to be a part of it, we want to, you know, not think about, um, this whole movement about, um, keeping our cities. Less bright, um, but I would. Would like you to think hard about that and realize that you're not just making a decision for your town, but you're also setting the stage for other municipalities, uh. Um, so I know that, um. He made a, a decision tonight about, thinking about the, the change in the vote to sixteen. Uh, age sixteen and that was, you know, in. The, the change in the vote to sixteen, uh, age sixteen and that was, you know, and you had a survey that was, you know, you're following and you, you wanna. Take into serious consideration and I, I know that Ralph mentioned. Other surveys that have said very clearly that our town and our environment committee really want low wattage bulbs. Um, for our LED lights. Um, I think that that's something that. I would like the town council to take seriously, um. And, you know, I just wanna remind everybody that, you know, we're already working in a compromised environment, our LED choices because. Like the ci- city of San Francisco wanted to use, is using twenty-seven hundred Kelvin, which is slightly warmer length than what Pepco is offering. Um, but we've reached a point, um, that we have to, we have to move forward and like, um, you both have said, you know. This is a decision, this is a baseline decision. We can revisit this in a year's time and say, hey, you know, we, we put all low wa- wattage bulbs in here, but. Maybe this intersection needs a little light to help. For whatever reason, because of the glims or because of whatever. Uh, but you know, we have not had any serious safety issues in our town that warrants. The need to increase the wattage of our town streets. Um, and as Matt mentioned in the last meeting, you know, both fifty and seventy fall within the average, um. Of what the existing lights are right now in the town. So fifty is slightly on the lower side of the average and seventy watts is slightly on the higher side of average. So. Like, like, like we said before, we highly recommend, um. Using fifty watts everywhere in the town and, you know, if. You know, we, we need to move forward and make a vote tonight. So whatever it is, just keep in mind that you're not making a vote that, uh, you, you can always upgrade. So don't feel like if you decide to do everything fifty and maybe seventy at some of the intersections. That's not the end all. I mean, you can come back in a year's time and say we need a hundred in the two intersections in Dorset Avenue because this is a through street and it's important. So I don't feel like you need to feel like, you know, God, I made a decision. On the day in July because you can revisit it and spend an extra couple thousand dollars to put up, you know, a couple brighter bulbs. So that's pretty much all I'm gonna say tonight, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I dedicate Dorset and I'm gonna be brief. Bottom line is I support what the speakers have said. I support a lower wattage. Uh, just wanna give you a little bit of perspective. I have an LED lamp in front of my house. We were the first of the three, you know, pilots we've had on LEDs and. It's sufficient, it's bright, but it's not too bright. I think it's appropriate level. And I think that's not gonna be a basic problem across the town. And also just to give you a little bit of history, I've been, the town has been looking at this for about two decades. And I have been involved with several of these efforts and putting back when Alan Fox was on the cap. You know, and he actually took a complaint to the PSC. About Pepco's pre-traffic house threats, uh, not allowing LEDs. So bottom line, I'm in support of the lower wattage as those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Exactly. Uh, Rohit Kana, uh, raises hands.
Okay.
Um, thank you very much. This is Rohit Kana with, um, Fallstone Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to say that I think, um. The debate on wattage is, I think, uh, besides the point, I think that, uh. Uh, the issue is not the wattage. As much as it is the complete inefficiency. Of the way in which street lighting is, um, provided in, in our town and probably in all municipalities. For, for me, the issue is not street lighting, the issue is sidewalk lighting. Um, and I think the idea of having, uh. Wh- whether it's LED or not is, I mean, I'm for LED for sure and I'm, uh, for the efficiency. But I am not, I'm not seeing any improvements in sidewalk lighting. With all the pilots we've done. Now, I think this is the third pilot we've done. Uh, going back as, as, as David said, I don't know how many decades, um. The bottom line is that sidewalk lighting and pedestrian safety. Is not getting any better with the way in which we have lights currently. Uh, what we need are lampposts that are closer to the sidewalks. Directed at the sidewalks, not into Paige's house, not into the trees. Um, but directed at the sidewalk and lower down. We don't need all the lighting that, uh. Uh, that is currently provided going into the canopy. And, and, and spread out wide. The, the, street lighting is not the issue. So I really, I mean, my plea is quite frankly, uh, to really, for the town to think a bit more creatively. About having better sidewalk lighting, better pedestrian safety. And not just simply say, okay, let's replace the current street, uh, lights with LED and declare job done. Because the job's not done. We haven't got better pedestrian lighting. And if you just put the LED there now on the streetlights, I'm pretty sure that we're not gonna have the budget. And the council presumably will not be in a position to come back and say, okay, now let's put. Uh, lower lampposts on sidewalks with more directed lighting on the, on, on, on the sidewalks. So my concern is that we are just going down a path. Uh, that doesn't solve the, the core issue. Uh, and I think we could in fact address many of the concerns of those who have spoken tonight. By having more efficient, better directed lighting at the sidewalk level. And focus more at the human scale rather than that, that the streetscape scale, which I think is utterly inefficient and unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Derek. That's, yes, okay, so now this closes the, um, public comment section and now I will turn it over to the council president. To lead the discussion. And decision. Thank you. This is, I think this was exciting because this is something that, you know. For my five years on the council, we've been working on this and this back much further, um. I am in favor. Basically, uh, lowest wattage equivalent bulbs that we can use. For a number of reasons and one, the, the environmental reasons. Uh, and discussed very eloquently by a number of our residents. That was not addressed in some of the public safety, um, issues, but in. Other conversations which I can share with the, uh, council members, I believe. You receive positive correspondence from, uh, Kumar Swani. You can have issues with glare with the. Higher wattage holes and that glare actually interferes with safety for pedestrians to drive. So my goal is. My interest is to keep it low. I also note that. The town has spoken on this, that both in surveys and in people that have turned out here at this meeting. I would say that we. It's, would not be exaggeration, say the overwhelming desire of concerned residents in slower light. Those are my thoughts, pardon me.
Yeah, I, I, I've been turned on this one too by, by listening to residents and by reading and by seeing as well and I'm in favor of. Fifty watt bulbs on all the straightaways in town now. And I arrived at that partly. By looking at that fifty watt bulb at forty-eight nineteen Dorset and it does a fine job. It covers the street and the sidewalk, um, and it sheds light on both. Um, the one on Surrey is seventy watt, actually doesn't cover, doesn't shed light from the sidewalk and that's because the lamp pole is slanted. So that it's pushed out over the street too much and there's no light coming back onto the sidewalk on it. It's an unfortunate placement. That's what we should do in the intersections. We should discuss separately, I think, but, but I, I am in favor of fifty watt bulbs on all the streetways.
Thank you, Rob. Kevir?
Well, first of all, I'm very glad that we're gonna act on something that has been a lively issue for twenty years. And we will be voting on it today. So I'm willing to compromise so we can vote on it today. That's number one. Number two, I think that it, it would be sort of a mistake to not. Equate lighting our streets properly to. Public safety. I mean, I, I'm struggling with the logic of why wouldn't, well, let streets be good safer streets. It's common sense to be. Um, so that's the second thing. The third thing, there's a bit of misinformation, number of things said today. The town managers report like, you know, kind of lays out, I think. Sort of how came to that proposal, that it wasn't to pick high wattage. Or avoid picking low wattage, but it was based on sort of where the average is today. At the town, which I thought was a reasonable direction. And then lastly, I think if there's a way to, you know. Um, I can't remember who it was who said, maybe we should think about. You know, doing this differently in different parts of the town. You know, we could, we could. So instead of saying fifty everywhere or seventy everywhere, a hundred everywhere. If there's a way to sort of figure out a way forward where perhaps we look at certain. Streets where there's been a history of incidents like Dorset. To be better lit versus those that, um, are more in the interior of the town, perhaps. We can think about it. I don't have a clip of proposal that. I, I'm very reluctant. You know, as you know, to become an expert on every new issue that comes forth in council. That's why I like our building engineer and a stormwater engineer and a town arborist. I'm not a lighting expert. I think we followed a very good process. And I thought the proposal was very compelling, but it, you know, I do wanna vote on it today. I do wanna move it forward, so I'm willing to compromise.
Thank you.
Um, so as far as the public safety committee, um. I talked to Kumar and, um, so really the public safety committee as a whole really has felt that they don't have like quite enough information. In order to, as a group collectively, do something, however, he, um, you know, has strong. Opinions on, um, you know, he believes that we should use the le- the lowest wattage. Um, that we can, so use the fifty watts for everything. And then, um, he believes that we should, um. We should look at the fiscal year twenty-four, um, budget and perhaps open up some money to do a pilot of more of a lighting, a sidewalk lighting. Situation, which is what, um. Mr. Kana had said as well, um, and so just a couple of different things like. Look at a pilot lighting for the sidewalks, you know, in specific areas. And then number two, kind of go back to what I think Matt, you had talked about like a couple of years ago, which was that, um. We need to have a policy or, you know, something in place where. We need to look and see if there are street holes that we should be adding. And if there's places where we can add these light holes, um, to some of these streets to make them a little bit more safer and well lit. And then number three, uh, you know, just a regular cadence of, um, tree. Trimming and management to make sure that, you know, they're not interfering too much with the, these bulbs is what he believes. And what I believe is that, um, you know, I, at first I was like, oh my gosh, more light is better. And, um, just like you were saying, like, oh, it deters crime and this and that. And then I started, um, researching it a little bit more. And the animals and the environment, the toxins and all that. And so now I, and, and Lucy's comment about a prison yard. And, um, so now I believe that we should use the lowest wattage that, that we can. And, um, you know, perhaps look at using seventy watts for, you know, in an intersection or two, or maybe not even need it. I mean. There's really not that many intersections in our town that, that, you know, you couldn't see. The light, so, um, that's my own personal opinion.
Thank you. Good, good discussion, um. If, if I could take the liberty of making a proposal for further discussion, something to be a little more concrete on. Try to make some of your points here and recognizing that Dorset is a major. What would folks think about fifty watts throughout the town with seventy watts on Dorset intersections?
So I think that we don't, I don't, I don't know we necessarily would need it at the bottom of Dorset by little balls because there's that light that's already, the street light that's already there. I mean, the, um, street. Street lights, yeah.
Definitely.
Um, it, it seems like, you know, a little bit brighter down there. I don't know, but I'm, I, I think that, um. I, I think that to me, the, the darkest intersection. Is also the one that could use some tree trimming, um, which is the one that is Dorset and Warwick. Uh, where you turn for the pool, because you know, like that, those, it's pretty, it seems like that to me is the darkest intersection.
Um, thank you.
So is on Dorset, fifty on the street away, seventy at the intersection.
That's what I'm proposing, just so we have.
And there was a comment at the beginning of the evening. That was about the street light, I'm forgetting now.
Yeah, George Way.
Yes, and he had made a specific recommendation. What did he say?
Called he was.
Management.
He wanted lower wattage, but I don't know what his specific intersection was.
He's at Dorset and Surrey.
The. I think man, man, that managed.
He said, he said, low, lower wattage in that Dorset and Surrey. He suggested that, um. We needed more, that he, he liked the light at the Dorset and Surrey, um, intersection. And that he thought, which is actually not one of our.
Which is the older. I wonder about.
Um, yes, and he thought that that would, that was a good model for what we should think about townwide.
I might get so.
That's right. I mean, it, I, 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 I would support a motion that says, uh, fifty watts throughout the town and seventy watts at the. Dorset and Warwick intersection and at the Dorset and Surrey intersection. Um, now, there are actually two lights at the Dorset and Surrey intersection. We can probably get by with fifty watts on the two of them, but. Seventy watts would, it doesn't seem at that intersection. The reason for that is they are our two busiest intersections. Um, Dorset and Warwick is a four-way intersection in town. It is by far the busiest intersection in town. Dorset and Surrey, it is busier than actually the one down the hill because of traffic coming up from Surrey and down to Surrey and across Dorset, so it is a bigger intersection too. Um, that's all, I mean, that.
Okay, what, what I would wanna understand is if you did that, would our. Sort of the way our lights are in town appear to be dimmer than where they are now?
No. That is not the understanding from what like Kumar and I think you have said.
Well, Matt, is that your?
As, as been pointed out by several people, they, they, the, his, his woman's analysis is incomplete. Um, because of LED lights are directional lights, whereas HPF lights throw their light just anywhere. Um, and. The LED lights are pointing the lights down, which means all of the light. In an LED light is coming down to the street and the sidewalk. Whereas the light in an HPS is being spread around. So a fifty watt buys you more than the equivalent in an HPF. Matt, what's your opinion?
Well, that's true, um. That, there's a part of the benefit of the LED lights is that they, they, they are able to better directionally. Use the lights. The, I, I think Barton, Barton brought this up too, the, 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 the fifty watt equipment. Which is really twenty, twenty-three watts is. Right there on kind of the edge of. If, if it got any lower than that, these ones would, would burn, would, would be burned out by that point, the existing lights. It's on the low end of what a high pressure sodium light emits in general, in, in terms of measuring it in lunars. Um. I, I, I think that. Like Robin said, I think because of the way that LED lights. Are able to better directionally, uh, focus their lights in the areas that you want them to. You probably can get away with lower wattages, um, so it's not exactly an apples to apples comparison and. And I mean, granted, I'm not a lighting expert either, um, and, and so part of it is based on my own observations. And I mean, granted, I'm not a lighting expert either. Um, and so part of it is based on my own observations and I I mean. The the honest truth is I I don't see a huge difference between fifty and seventy, for example, that it's it's. Certainly not a hill I would die on and um I I I.
A huge difference with a hundred and fifty, though, oh boy.
Oh, yes, yeah, yes. Well, the hundred fifty jumps, there there's there's an in-between one hundred and one hundred fifty that they don't. So it makes sense that there's such a big gap there. Um. The seven, the seventies kind of right in the middle of our existing lights. The fifty is on the low end of what our existing lights emit based on limits.
Yeah, I know, but the directional light means that they're both shifted off.
Well, and so in like some, in some instances, like um. You know, I think that I think that we should strategically review. If we think that, you know, we want seventy on all doors at intersections or something, we should strategically review um what that looks like, for example. On deal and and door set. So there's only two light poles, like, I think. One is on one side of like, you know, the door set deal, one is on the other. So there's not one. Or on this other side of door set. So adding two seventies here is probably not needed. You know, we could probably get away with the two fifties there, because there's not even like a light there. Um, and then the Surrey light. I don't know where the light poles are there, but to me that. I don't know, to me, it always seems bright when up that hill, like.
There are two lights there, not which is by it, right?
Yeah, so I don't know that that would necessarily need seventy.
It it could, it probably must be fifty would probably do it because there are two lights there. Whereas seventy is probably required for Warwick, yeah.
I think that Warwick is, like I said, I mean, I also think they need to trim the shrubs, but like. Um, you know, Warwick for sure is the one where I think definitely requires the extra.
And the current uh line at Dorset and Warwick is.
That's the one hundred watt.
And and we think that's too much for Dorset and Warwick.
People have said it is too bright, yes.
Are there four poles there right now?
Twenty-one, that's one mile on.
Where's that one?
It's it's on the north end of. Essex and the west end of.
And what about Deal and Cumberland?
So Deal and Cumberland, there's. Oh, oh, Deal and and Little Cumberland. Yeah, that that's. So that light seemed so great because the light had been out for like eight months. And we didn't have one. And so it was like, all of a sudden, it was like, oh, my God, you can like see up into the um, you know, up into like the hill that goes up to Somerset.
Yeah, the biggest change that's a hundred.
I think so.
The biggest change in our lighting we're going to see with the LEDs is that they don't burn out.
So it will have more consistent lighting and there'll be fewer dark patches.
Yeah. There's gonna be more reliable lighting with these LEDs so that therefore you're not gonna have like. You know, and that was part, it made all of Cumberland, Little Cumberland look dark because that. That that corner was really missing a crucial light, and then there were two other lights that were missing on the street too. So once everything kind of set like that, and I agree with what Barton said in terms of like, um. You know, this is just, you know, this this, we don't have to like decide this and like, you know, in blood and say like, this is how it's always gonna be. But to get like that baseline so we can all and and have the trees trimmed. And um get the baseline all around town so that we can kind of see what that looks like. Because I think that we'll all be pleasantly surprised by more lights.
Okay, well, let's try the motion then, um that we installed fifty watt bulbs in all locations in town except. The Dorset and Warwick Warwick intersection where we put in a seventy watt bulb.
Right. Okay, so discussion. Um, I've got my question now. I want to let's. Let's the newer interest.
Is there is there a discussion?
The I I was just following, I was focused on Shannon's comments and I lost my um. Our process. So you were saying that it's. The fact is LED will provide more consistent lighting. So it will have that sort of net effect of improved consistent lighting.
And but we do, I mean, and maybe we need to write it into the motion, but like. We do need to make sure, because I know they trimmed some of the trees, but like, we really need to make sure that the trees are looked at all across the lights.
We could build that into motion, July. This this was my thought is, you know, this idea that it's a baseline, you know, there's a cost implication.
Yeah.
You know, we will be, you know, these are the same costs, right? The cost doesn't change fifty, seventy, hundred, is that right, Matt?
For insulation, yes.
For insulation. So.
But they'll be cheaper than now, like versus.
Replacing the bulb.
Well, no, no, he means like, if 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 we were to go higher versus lower first, higher will produce. Higher electricity bills. However, I mean, I think they're all going to be cheaper than what we pay now.
I'm just thinking about the cost of replacement installation. I I think you got answered in the sense that this install will be of a certain price. But if we wanted to go. One up, that should be significantly lower, right? Just above that's a state.
Well, it it'll be thirteen fifty per. Oh, exchange.
One last question, one last question. Will we be adding a glare shields? To these lights, which was discussed at one point.
My request was what we've been, how we've been handling it, right?
Yeah, I I. I think it makes sense um personally.
So should we put that in the motion as well?
Does anyone remember?
Is there any, because that's consistent with the fireflies.
And not shining in the pages house.
Is someone amended?
Uh, 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 so amending the motion. To stipulate that all lights have glareed views added to that.
Is that more expensive, though?
It is.
Do, oh, do we have the cost without?
Have we gone out?
I mean, the thought was that we do it. Get them all in and then by if people experience glare, then.
Yeah, yeah, it's like.
Yes.
Okay, sir, further discussion of the question. Hearing that, obviously. Excellent. Thank you for all of your.
Champagne.
Okay, so you can all celebrate. Okay, the next item is this um. Gift proposal. Of a football table. So ready to say a couple of things about this. So. You know, in two thousand fourteen, because of all of the problems that we've experienced with gifts in town. The piano, which I was involved in, which turned out to be. A problem. The bench at Warwick, which was also a problem. And some of the artwork here and of course the batting cage. So a a gift policy was uh established, which um Matt said. And so apparently uh someone has suggested they want to um. Donate a foosball table to the. To the pool area. And uh another issue regarding that potential donation is that, you know, in the past, when when. Different games have been proposed, they're very controversial and there's a lot of process. And I think that to um. To accept this gift. Um, without a process is a problem. So I've been thinking about it, and I I do think that the best way to solve this in the quick. Because I think this requires a whole council discussion, that gift policy. And this is something I was talking to uh Matt and the president today. Is why don't we just allow Matt to uh who has the authority to run in pool. To let that uh football table come here for now. And and but not accept it as a gift, because that implies a lot of things, which is the work. That we're taking over something that then becomes a fixture that we might be expected to to maintain. And there might be people that object to that, that that table there, I don't know how much. But look at how controversial pickleball is within the noise. Maybe there are people that go into the pool that don't want a an extra. Noisy activity there. I I don't know.
How about we accept it?
So so all I'm saying is that I think the best thing is is that we discuss this as a gift and accept. For the future, that that we just allow Matt to. To let them put it there and at the end of the season they have to take it away. And then some other decision you might make, but I don't think you should accept that gift tonight without a process. So that's all I'm gonna say, as your president. Um, you have any questions? So we we don't even, I mean, first of all, if we're gonna get a gift, you know, we should have a picture of it, we should know what it is, the condition, we don't know anything. It was just on a listserv and somebody wants to 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 give a gift.
But I think we should have. Flexibility and dexterity in the town to consider gifts that are. And I don't think this, the gift policy in the town. Really applies to.
Because because when this, because as I was explaining to you. That when this policy was developed, these are the only gifts that by the time.
Sure.
We wanted to accept because of all these issues like I described.
Right, but what?
Anyway, but right now it's question time and then you can talk back to it. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
What is the position of the pool committee?
They want um the foosball table, because all the kids play.
There's there's. And discuss that.
No, well, Matt's after.
That's not the meeting before, that's just one.
Well, anyway, the point was what happened was. There was a lot of um. There was, there were a lot of kids, there were, we had a couple of swim meets at. Two different pools that had a foosball table and all the kids just loved it. So and Dario had one.
I I should.
Anyway. Okay, um. So what are you gonna?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. That was Steve's question now, that's Rob's.
Yeah, I mean, given the concerns that you're raising, I I think we can accept it on loan from the owner for the season. And then decide what to do at the end of the season at that point.
Here's a, here's a thought I have. I know you have asked questions.
You, you're next, what's your question?
First of all, Jeffrey, I appreciate you bringing this up because I think you're referring to the baseball. Next. For instance, of the game, right? That was a good.
Yeah, but I'm also, I'm just, I'm just explaining, we talked about this a bit orientation. The piano sounded like a great idea.
Yeah.
That was accepted as a kid. I was part of a kid. It became a huge problem.
What was the problem with the piano?
The problem is that it was in the way here, nobody used it.
I see, I see, I see.
Then the bench, the bench at the at the entrance there.
Yeah.
That that became a problem. There's also.
As in no one is sitting on the bench.
Well, eh, it's the, it's too late to go into all this.
Well, anyway.
And all I'm saying is is that, all I'm saying is that, you know, I'm not. I'm just identifying.
No, no, I I sure do.
I'm not, I I'm not, I mean, it's a nice idea, but also we don't know what the condition of it is. I mean, maybe the town is just fine with the football table, the foosball table. I don't know.
I I think what what I was gonna say is that I hear you. That sometimes when we get gifts, we have to maintain that, it gets complicated. I know that was the case with the baseball. That, right? It got complicated. But in this instance, it is in order of magnitude. At at a scale that I don't think that would be an issue. I think we all can make a reasonable. Sort of all of that. I think in this case, it simply will not be an issue. Um, you know, so I think, I think we can accept it. Uh, but I I I agree with you, however, that we should review the gift policy. Actually, Matt has brought up multiple kinds in the past. So it shouldn't be on the uh. One of our agenda items for future discussion, updated. But I think short of that, I I think it's reasonable. I don't, and anyway, we're gonna go into a construction period, so things will have to be put away anyway. You know, so and I mean, back, we'll have an updated gift policy by the time the pool reopens next season. And so I think that's my view. I don't know if that's adding up for everyone, but that. At a much smaller scale, I don't think we'll have the same set of issues we've had with previous gifts like the baseball hat, which I agree was complicated.
Eh, everything is one topic. Yes, and and maybe there's, maybe there are people. Maybe there are people that think that there should be, that space should be used for some other kind of activity. Well, all I'm saying is that you're you're, there's an attempt to short circuit a process.
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
I'm addressing your question. I'm saying, I can tell you that since. Shannon and I are frequently there with large groups of children in that area. I can tell you with great confidence. The football is not gonna add to notes that doesn't already exist. It's not gonna deter people from using the space than the way it's been used already. All of your concerns. Are incorporated in our recommendation, just just so you know, it's it's sort of, we appreciate it. That is a space where a lot of kids are hanging out playing, the stable tennis already out there and they're playing. You know, when there are events, there's like a, you know, clear ice setup over there. These are, this is constantly being frequent and used by. Predominantly children. And so I I can see that, not that adults don't like being cool, but it's, you know, I can see that. And so it's not in the order of.
Well, that's why, well, that's why I'm. That's what I'm saying, just let it, let them put it there. And they don't accept it as a gift. That's all I'm saying. Just let them put it, but Matt has the authority to let them put it there.
Okay.
And then see what happens. That's all I'm saying.
Fine, sounds good. Sounds good. Do we, you don't need a resolution or anything, right? There's no.
Right, that's right.
Excellent.
I I just, I just, I just, I just think it should be accepted as a gift without a process. And 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 as I said, perhaps, you know. Per perhaps, I remember there was a lot of debate with the tennis committee wanting to put certain items over there. And and maybe, maybe someone's gonna recommend that the town, I mean, how much does this thing cost? Maybe the town should buy of of uh some other bat toy or something. Of a better quality. We don't even know, you know, we don't even know the quality of it or.
We can show this the foosball.
And we and we don't, we don't want the town, we don't want the town, you know, it's. The the piano, we don't want the town to become a dumping ground or stuff that people don't want at their address. That's all I'm saying. And I'm not disparaging this particular nice idea. But I'm just saying that use the example of the piano.
And we can use that cross talk lines.
Totally, like, you don't want like someone donating like, you know, a hundred and fifty little rubber duckies to the pool area.
But also without a process, and and it's not just a chair or committee. To make, I mean, you have a meeting, I mean, people can discuss it, maybe people have other ideas.
But the bottom line is. The 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 football table can be at the pool, Matt has the authority.
I I just think that, I.
Let leave it with that.
Let we do that, and there was another idea.
But wait a, wait a minute, wait. Shannon has asked for a question.
No, no.
And then it's a double hearing, so we have to, but we have to see if anybody wants to. Remember, I'm all about protecting the process.
Right, like what if someone donates a bunny to the pool or something?
Okay, would you have any questions about this now? Did did the chair want to?
Uh, yes, he had raised his hand before. Uh, Matt, if you're still there.
Yep, I I'm still here. Um, that's Matt Zaff, Dorset Avenue, Chair of the Pool Committee. I I just wanted to. Sort of alleviate two concerns of the mayor's. Um, number one, we did discuss this at a pool committee meeting, not the donation, but foosball specifically. And it was a hundred percent approved and recommended actually that the town purchase. A foosball table, and it was in response to that recommendation. That Dario told us that he had one in near mint condition that he would happily donate. Um, so to one, it's not just coming from me. This was openly discussed at a pool committee meeting. And approved by the entire committee, just not the actual specific.
Well, I don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't think that was ever in a recommendation that the council got.
It it was actually, it was in a list of different games that we recommended to Matt Trolinger as far as purchase. It was not to the council. But it was.
Well, okay, so it wasn't a recommendation. It wasn't a, you know.
It's past ten o'clock. Is there any disagreement here?
And then notice.
Yeah, that was the second.
That's okay, so, but it was on the agenda, so now uh.
There was a second item added to the agenda.
It's your territory. Doesn't, since it's on the agenda, doesn't somebody have to make an admission about it?
No, no, Mr. Mayor, the council by consensus agreed to take no.
Okay, hey, the next item was the resolution uh regarding.
The Olympics.
Uh, the end result, the town council recognized that the extraordinary contributions of Somerset residents Russell Queen and. Uh, the end result, the town council recognizes the extraordinary contributions of Somerset residents Russell Queen and Walt Valen to a successful. Somerset Olympics at the pool on Sunday, two in favor.
Second.
Approved. Okay, so that has and the last item is to. Do you want to make a merger to wave to town managers?
Yes, that's.
Very much, thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, good job.
Here, there isn't another agenda item.
Good job with the lights.